Okay, all of our feeds are synced. We're on North Penn Television YouTube and our webinar is live. Dr. G, the meeting is yours.
Good evening. This is our regularly scheduled meeting of our ECI committee. We, I'm calling this meeting to order and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second, if someone already did it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Minutes approved. And we are going to move on in our agenda to summer programs 2022.
Right. Good evening, everybody. We actually have a packed agenda this evening. You can see a lot of faces on the panel. We're going to hear from our curriculum team, followed by three of our principals to talk a little bit about all of the amazing things happening at their schools. But first, I'm going to ask our wonderful Director of Curriculum and Equity, Dr. Hart, to introduce the supervisors who are going to talk to us a little bit about summer programming, followed by curriculum adoptions, and then happy to take questions before we switch gears and hear from our schools. So, Dr. Hart?
All right, great. Thank you, Dr. Waters. Happy Thursday night, everyone. So we are delighted to be here this evening to talk about the really fabulous summer programming that we have in store for our children and families this summer. So we have three people who are actually presenting this evening. Mrs. Fenstermaker, Mrs. Early, and then Dr. Bowers. And then, once we finish with the summer program, we're going to kind of shift, as Dr. Waters shared, to curriculum adoptions. And we have a couple of people who'll be presenting at that time. We'll be focusing on two particular areas. The first is middle school math. So Donna Dome, who is curriculum supervisor for STEM, will be presenting along with two of the learning coaches, Rebecca Russo and Melinda Lyon, who've really spent a lot of time and effort in this process. And they'll be able to kind of talk a little bit about the work that they've engaged in to get to this point. And then, we will also have an opportunity for Mrs. Early to talk about the French curriculum adoption as well. As Dr. Waters said, after that time, we'll take a little bit of a break and then shift gears to continue the conversations where we have building administrators and leaders actually talking about the cultural proficiency and equity work that is taking place in each of their buildings. I'll introduce them when we get a little bit closer to that part of the program. But one of the things I do want to highlight is, even though we have a lot of people presenting this evening and a lot of different presentations, you will notice some themes that are reoccurring throughout all of the presentations. The idea of being focused on student engagement and agency and student voice. The focus on reducing barriers to students and their families. And the idea of really solidifying connections, connections to student to student, as well as to content and student to teacher as well. So with that, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm going to turn it over to Nina Fenstermaker.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to share with you three summer programs that we are offering at the elementary level. And I don't know about anybody else, but this is my favorite time of year as we get ready for these summer programs, because they are programs that I'm particularly very proud of that we can offer in North Penn. So I'm not sure who's navigating the slide. There we go. All right, so the first program I'm going to share with you is Spark. If you remember, last year, we did rename our program. It used to be the Summer Reading Program, and we renamed it last year to Spark. So that is the acronym for Summer Program for Academic Readiness for Nights. And in years past, we have always offered this program to students in grades K through 2. Last year, we were able to invite our third graders to the program. And this year, through Essar Funding, which I'm very pleased about, we're able to offer this program to students in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. The program is fully in-person. We are also partnering with ESY in the way that we will share buildings and have our K through 2 students at Gwinnett Square, and then we'll have our 3 through 6 students at Walton Farm. Just like last year, transportation will be provided, and the program will run over four weeks. So it will start Monday, July 11th, and run through Thursday, August 4th. You know, just like any other program, in the summertime, we do not have any buildings open on Friday. So it will be a Monday through Thursday program. And we really just focus on ensuring that we have, you know, literacy instruction in all components of ELA to strengthen their literacy skills. And then we also support foundational math instruction as well. And our next program is the Elementary Virtual Enrichment Program. This will be completely asynchronous this summer. We will not have staff monitoring student completion of activities that we post. But we have a great program that we'll be posting on the district website for students to access. And we are, it will also be weekly themed as well. And we are talking about opportunities for engagement through some live read-alouds. So while the program itself won't be operated, you know, by a teacher on a day-to-day basis, we will have an opportunity for staff to engage with students throughout the summer if they so choose to engage with us. And we'll also have access to all of our personalized platforms such as Freckle. We also have Reading A to Z, and that's not on the slide, as well as iReady, that's also not on the slide. So all of our personalized software will be available to students to access over the summer. Just like Spark, there's no cost to students. And if there's, you know, any incidental costs related to this program, we will be able to cover it through Essar. And this is our Kindergarten Readiness Camp for the class of 2035. This is a program that we have designed for students that are incoming to our kindergarten this year. We will be working on learning-ready behaviors, school-ready behaviors. We'll be offering lots of school experiences, ones that particularly are new to our students and sometimes a struggle for kids that have never been on a bus or in a lunchroom or even in a classroom setting. For a lot of our students, they may not have gone to daycare or had, you know, access to a preschool experience. This school, this program will be held at Hatfield, Oak Park, and Gwinnett. So we will be splitting up across the region, across the district. It will be run over two weeks, so August 1st to August 11th. It will be about four hours a day for the students, and this program is also supported through the Essar Funding. And there are the three programs that I'm sharing tonight. I can answer questions now, or we can come back after we're done all summer programs, whatever works for the group.
Can you go back to the slide, the kindergarten readiness camp slide?
Yep, I think we're there, Dr. G.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just reading something on the slide and just... And did I hear you say we have, this is our first time doing the Kinder Camp in this way?
That's actually a really great question. So it's the first time we're doing the kindergarten readiness camp in this way. We have offered kindergarten readiness camps prior to, or pre-COVID, really. Those programs, you know, were kind of dissolved once we went to full-day kindergarten. And we recognized how powerful and impactful these programs were, especially now. You know, when the, when experiences have been different through the COVID experience. So we are bringing this program back. It's just a little bit different.
And what was our participation in this program in the past?
Another great question, and I think, you know, I could probably answer with a more general idea, because I didn't supervise the program in previous years, but I believe it was about 100 to 150 students.
Dr. G, I'm sorry, Dr. G, I was just going to say, when I was principal at Hatfield, one of the, we were one of the schools that had the program. And we kept the classes relatively small, but it was about 15 students, you know, in each class, because they wanted to make sure that, you know, the teacher could really target the skills that are kind of listed with the readiness and, you know, getting them prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Dr. G, can I, I have a quick question?
Absolutely.
Ms. Fenstermaker, I see the hours, 9 to 1. Does that include lunch for the kids? Oh, I did see, okay, lunchroom on here. So they will be fed?
Yeah, and this is, you know, really a big part of our program, because we do want to make sure that the students have that experience to go into the cafeteria and punch in their lunch code. These are things that, you know, any kindergartner will want some experience with, and the teachers do. You know, our kindergarten teachers are top-notch, and this is something that they focus a lot of time on in the beginning of the school year. But this is an experience we wanted to embed within this program as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm wondering if our, is it at those specific schools, the children only at Hatfield are invited? Or is that just the location where the school is, the location where the program is being held?
Yeah, so this is just the location which the program is being held, so that it will be regionized. So, you know, for example, if there's a student at North Wales that is eligible for this program, they would attend at Gwinnett, because it's the school closest to their sending area.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like a great program.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to discuss two more elementary programs that we will be having this summer. I'm going to start with the Summer Library Program, which provides access to North Penn Library to promote literacy during the summer months. And similarly to what Nina shared about the Spark and ESY location, you can see that we've linked up Hatfield, Gwinnett Square, and Walton Farm as well. And this program will last a little bit longer, so July 5th to August 4th. Again, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday only, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And this just gives students access to library resources. Any resources that are in the library, they have access to. So just able to continually check out books and resources from those libraries. Okay, and our last elementary program is the ELD Elementary Summer Program. And this program is targeted for beginner and intermediate English learners in our district. Nina and myself coordinate to ensure that we, that any students that aren't in that beginner or intermediate English learner status are then eligible for our other summer programs such as Spark. And this program is, like I said, really designed for those English learners who are at that beginner status. And the format for this program is a little bit different. You'll notice that this program is still virtual, and the rationale for that is we've surveyed our families, and many of our families really like to travel during the summer and visit family. So this program just really helps with meeting our family's needs and provides that additional engagement. So last summer, we had 150 students attend this program virtually. So we're hoping for a very similar outcome this year. One of the things that we do to accommodate our students, we partner with technology, and Dr. Landis ensures that all students have access to their Chromebook throughout the summer. And we also purchase for them earbuds, so that they're able to access the class and have that quiet space in order to complete it. The times for the program are, or the timeframe, I should say, July 5th to July 28th, Monday to Thursday. And it will occur via Google Meets from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. And this program is paid for via Title III Funding, which is our title grant that serves our English learner population. And we have 10 teachers in order to accommodate all the students in the program. And that's it for my two slides, if anyone has questions on either the library program or the Elementary English Learner Program.
I am wondering what we do in terms of outreach to ensure that we are able to capture as many of our multilingual students and to the program. Sometimes families don't always know about it, or so I'm just wondering what we do in terms of outreach and how we get people signed up and reach out, especially to those who may need translation or that kind of thing.
So that's a great question. So we do a two-fold communication system for our students who are eligible for the program. We not only send home translated documents via email, but we also do physical copies that just go, that the ESL teacher distributes to the child and ensures it goes home in their backpack. Although that way may seem a little bit old-school, we do find with many of our families that having those actual forms translated going home with the student is one of the most, the easiest way for them to actually get it and then return it. So that's what we do in order to make sure that they get it.
Dr. G, may I chime in real quick here?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I love this Summer Library Program. You know, it's so, it's such a burden to have a child that wants to read a lot, you know. Sometimes it can get a little expensive, and certainly, having access to these local libraries is absolutely wonderful. And I really appreciate that flexibility of having multiple schools be open. I was wondering, for the Elementary ELD Summer Program, if a family is having trouble with their Chromebook, is that just a communication to one of their teachers? Or is there an aspect of our district that's open for that type of assistance during the summer?
So that's a great question. We work pretty closely with Dr. Landis and her technology support team. So any tech issues, there's definitely staff available in the summer to help with that. And they're very accommodating, just like they are during the school year with Chromebook fixes or swaps. So she's, like I said, great and available to help with that over the summer.
That sounds great. Well done. Thank you.
Can I ask you to go back to the Summer Reading Slide? Um, and maybe it said it earlier, but are parents responsible for transportation to these schools for the library program?
So that's a great question. They are for this program. This isn't like a class, like the ELD Program or the Spark Program. It's really just an open library format. So whomever's with the child over, you know, if they have a caregiver or a grandparent or a parent, they're able to take them and, you know, explore all of the resources and check out books if need be.
And they can go to any particular school, even if they're with the grandmother in another district, they can go there as well?
So the three that, similarly to what Ms. Fenstermaker described with the Spark Program. So those three locations are selected, Walton Farm, Gwinnett Square, and Hatfield. So they're, again, regional in order to cluster, just because it's too much of a challenge to have every library, elementary library, open in the summer in terms of staffing and all of that. So regionally, they're able to access the school closest to them.
But what I meant is, like, if I lived in the Walton Farm School District area and my child was with the caregiver at Gwinnett Square, could they go there as well, or do they, are they relegated to staying at that one school?
I don't believe so, but maybe someone else on the call knows.
I utilize this program with my children, and I'm sure Dr. Waters, I believe, was going to answer. But I went to any of the locations with my own children to pick out books. A lot, what a lot of people do not know, or any public that could be looking, is that we are very unique in North Penn in that the Lansdale Library is not part of the county system. So what that means is, if you want a library card, you actually have to pay a fee at the Lansdale Library. Back when my kids were little, and they're in 10th grade now, that fee was about $30. It may still be the same, which, you know, to some, that could be a little costly for the summer. You know, when you're paying pool fees and everything else. Many, many school districts don't have to do that, because their library belongs to the county system. And so therefore, there, you would not typically have to pay an extra fee. So having these schools open to our children is a huge benefit for us, because our kids then don't have to pay that separate fee. They can just go to our libraries and be able to get library books all summer. So I appreciate that we have this, and I'll recognize, oh, go ahead.
And so the family can go to any library they want at any given time. They don't have to stay with one.
Yeah, that's correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fusco, did you have a question?
Your note just kind of prompted me to ask this. One of the advantages of being part of that county system is that you're also then able to access books in a larger digital format throughout the library. Is North Penn part of that, so that if students wanted to go have Libby on their phone or whatever and access something, a book, audiobook, a digital book, or whatever? Are we part of that? Is that something that they could, they could do and utilize?
We do have the electronic system that kiddos can check out books, like audiobooks. So that's available still over the summer. We have a system for that.
Is like a personal, like an in-house system, or is it something that's shared amongst, like, the county?
It's not shared amongst the county.
It's specific to our district, and we have, like, so many licenses for so many books. So like, for instance, pretty popular books, they'll have, like, a couple of them, so that kids can check them out. And there's also some audio versions available as well with that.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Stramacher, were you?
Yeah, I just wanted to add an additional point here, because the Summer Library buildings were strategically picked, because they align with our Spark Program and our ESY Program, so that students who come in person for ESY services or the Spark Program can access the libraries as well. And we do embed that during the day for the kids to go to the library, pick out books for their independent reading. And, you know, it's just another benefit to having these library programs running.
Are others seeing that the screen is partially blocked?
Yes, I was just going to ask that.
Mr. Gilmer, oh, thank you. Okay. I think if there's no additional questions about the Summer Library Program, we can move on to the next slide or the next part of the presentation.
It's right there, Bob. Nope, nope, Middle School Summer Education Program. All right, good evening, everyone. Great job, everybody who presented before me. I do need to get some tips from Ms. Fenstermaker and Mr. McBane, because they both mentioned how much their kids love to read and are excited for the summer programs. It's a struggle in the Bauer household to get Brady Bauer to read each night. I'll tell you that, but great job. I'm excited about the programs that all of you presented. So I'm here to present everyone's not favorite subject, but still a necessary subject, and that's summer remediation. That's for students who were not successful during the school year. We have a middle school program and a high school program, and they're really taught in a hybrid format, in that students can come in, or they don't need to. You will notice, I believe it's covered on the next slide, but it's applicable to the middle school program as well, that students who don't have a 60% or higher while they're in the summer program do need to come in. So we have teacher support and resources. We have special education and ELD support. But it is an asynchronous online program via eGenuity, much like MPVA at the secondary level, for a credit recovery. This, there is no cost to students, and we're very proud of the fact that it is hybrid, because a lot of our families did not participate in the past, because of some of the reasons that you heard this evening, whether it be transportation, vacation, jobs, sports. And the asynchronous online model has provided a lot more access. Last year, we had 303 students participate. While it's not great that we had 303 students that needed to recover their credit, it is great that we were able to afford them the opportunity to remediate the credit and ultimately get the credit towards graduation. So four days of in-person support, because our buildings are only open four days in the summer, Monday through Thursday. And it begins right at the end of the school year, that last week in June. It goes through the end of July. So Bob, if you could switch to the next slide, please? This is very similar content, but the same goes for summer school for grades 9 through 12. They are required to attend. You'll see that third bullet under when, required to attend if their grade falls below 60%. And again, no cost to students. This is done via Essar Funds. Happy to entertain any questions? Mr. Fusco?
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. I was just wondering if you've seen any, not participation so much, but increased need over the past two years for this program because of COVID and the impact it's had on our instruction?
Yes, so two years ago, you may recall that there was some legislation that essentially said students could not fail when shutdown occurred. So we did not run a summer program for remediation purposes. We did for enrichment purposes and made content available to students and families. But last year, 303 students is, it's an exceptional number. We do believe it's going to be far less this year, because students have been in school since the start of the school year and getting that hands-on access to their teachers and additional supports. But it's typically about half that, Mr. Fusco. So I can certainly report back to this committee when we have some numbers at the end of the year, but I would expect that it would be far less than 303. Dr. Lewis Campbell?
Yes, Dr. Bauer, I was just wondering, who determines if a student needs that reading remediation? Is it just based on the grades that they've received? Or if I, as a parent, feel that my child needs to go, even though the teacher has not determined that, can I say that I want my child in that program?
Yes, so it is typically students who do not pass the course, which in North Penn is below 64%. However, last year, we did have some families reach out who simply said that they wanted their child to be able to remediate or revisit course content, because they just didn't master the content. So we'll have to evaluate how many students we have. That was really difficult to manage, students who just simply wanted to take classes. But I'm hopeful that if we have families who would like to take classes, we'll have the resources to be able to do so. Thank you, Anaf.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Great question. Go ahead, Anaf.
Hey, Dr. Bauer, I should a quick question. So I remember a couple of years ago, when I volunteered, if the in-person support was kind of by periods. I'm just wondering, is that what it's still going to be like this year, or is it completely different? I just wanted to know the in-person setup.
Great question, Anaf. So since it's asynchronous, the teachers are to be accessible for office hours every day. There are just certain teachers who are present in the building each day. That's rotational. So you would have access to your teachers each day, but you would only have access to certain teachers. I don't know that particular schedule yet. It might be Math and Science teacher is in on Monday, Wednesday, and Social Studies English on Tuesday, Thursday. It live and in-person to come in, but you would have access throughout those schooling hours. Great question. Thank you. Sure thing. Okay, if that's it, I believe we had a very beautiful final slide there, Bob. Did you put that one up? Just some sunshine. Of course, I have a cell phone, because we can't seem to get those out of kids' hands, but...
I'm looking out the window, and there is no sunshine.
No sunshine. There we go. Happy summer program time. All right. So I just want to thank the committee for listening and thank everyone else who presented this evening. And I guess at this point, I kick it back to Dr. Waters or Dr. Hart?
We can kick it to Dr. Hart. Thank you, Dr. Bauer. But yeah, we will move into the next piece of curriculum before we get to the schools.
Yeah, so I am taking the ball. So as I said just a little while ago, we have two curriculum adoptions for your consideration this evening. One is French, and Mrs. Early will kind of talk through that. Yes, no?
Yeah, just real quick, we didn't take a vote on moving the summer programs forward.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Thank you. I'm going to take, I'm going to pass the ball back.
Thank you. Let's give it to Dr. [inaudible].
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. I'm sorry.
Can I have a motion to move our summer programs forward, please?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And now to Dr. Hart.
All right, great. So we are taking it back. So we have two areas of curriculum that we like to present for your consideration and vote to move forward. So I'll know that on the upfront, so I can pause at the end, at the end of the presentations as well. Rachel Early will talk a little bit about French adoption. And then, as I said a little while ago, Donna Donna Dome along with two of the learning coaches, Linda, Melinda Lyon and Rebecca Russo will talk about the process they went through to make the recommendation for the math program as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Early and Mrs. Dome to do the introductions.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Mrs. Early and I wanted to start with these two slides as a frame for our adoption process that helps us look at our purpose and our why. So the adoption of high-quality instruction materials ensure every student is learning on grade level, engaging in meaningful content, and we're also looking to decrease the inequities in instruction between and within schools. Mrs. Early.
So we want to make sure that all of the materials that we adopt really have an equity-focused lens on it. And whether it's French, math, or whatever, that we are really centering the needs of students who have been least served in our system, having a strong vision of instruction for all students, focusing on local priorities that reflect the needs and content of our students, and also making sure to include voices and perspectives from a broad range of stakeholders, such as students, families, teachers, and leaders when making all these decisions. So we just wanted to provide that frame before we dive in to talk a little bit about French and then middle school math. So I'm going to start and discuss French one and two. So we are looking at a resource for both of those levels of French. And as all of you probably know, we do have levels French one and two in all of our secondary buildings. And so the resource that I will be talking a little bit about tonight is from Wayside Publishing, and it's called Entrez Cultures. Levels one and two. So just a little bit about the process before I talk a little bit more about the resource. We did have a curriculum committee that included multiple stakeholders and of course, all of the teachers in our French department. We really started with the needs assessment and what we really began with was incorporating C I, which is comprehensive input, and also the ACT FEL standards, and I have those listed there. Unfortunately, P D E, in terms of their standards, they don't have any standards aligned to world language, so we use the ACT FEL standards in place of that. With all of that in mind, we took a look at three publishers. One of the things that we've noticed with the world language department, and as you all know, we offer five languages at North Penn. Many of the major publishers have dropped world language from their variety of resources that they offer. So we really had to dig deep, and most of the publishers are kind of more like smaller boutique publishers. So there's the list provided there. Go to the next slide. Thank you. And after that process, it was really clear that Entrez Cultures was the selective resource for a variety of reasons. First, just a little bit about the company. One of the things that really tied to our equity mindset is that this company specializes on teaching all languages with a wide variety of cultures in mind. So our teachers, you know, our committee really found that appealing, African-French, Canadian-French. It's really important because as we know, many countries around the world speak French other than just France. So that was a really important component of the program. Another important component of the program is just all of the different resources that are included with it. You know, of course, traditional textbooks, but a variety of online access for teachers and resources, particularly to apply that C I method that gets students engaging with the language. So that was really important, not just your traditional vocabulary. Lastly, what's really nice with the program is, and we're going to incorporate it into our implementation, it's just time and technology integration with Canvas. Obviously, we know that all of our teachers and students utilize Canvas as the L M S. So having that interplay is going to be really important for the success of the implementation. And just some more highlights about the program. The series is called French for a Connected World, and again, really tying back to all of the cultures that speak French. So that's a big highlight. And it really helps from novice learners through intermediate and really focusing in on that lens of interculturality. And of course, building language skills and all cultural insights is another component. And that cultural piece is important too, not just the language piece. And in, as well as including, you know, the traditional grammar vocabulary components. And what was really nice is there is a wide variety of audiovisual components and videos to help kids engage with learning the language and learning the culture. And I think that's it for my slides. Yep. And I'll just pause there and see if anyone has any questions about the French adoption or the process.
What is the the curriculum cycle by which we, like, how often do we review French or world languages in general? Are they only different, like you review French one year and Spanish a different year? Are they all on different cycles?
That's a really great question. So because we have five languages, because we're so fortunate to have that, and then we also have five levels of all five languages, except for Japanese, we have four levels because in Japanese, A P is level four. So for world language, we're pretty much always working on curriculum review. Last, last time that I was here for curriculum adoptions, this time last year, we were just finishing up the Spanish implementation. And now we're jumping into French. And so we start with levels one and two, and then after that, we then move into three and four, and then level five A P. And then we tend to cycle into another language just because we have so many languages and so many levels, it helps keep things moving and also, you know, remain fiscally responsible.
And how many years do we utilize this curriculum?
Typically, by the time, it usually is around ten years. We had our previous adoption for French was a program from Pearson, and this year was its tenth year for that particular product.
And what, and my final question, and then I'll pass it to Mr. Fusco, is what the cost of these materials are?
So the total cost for this adoption is, I think, eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars, and that includes everything. So teacher resources, student resources, physical resources, and licenses for all of our secondary schools, since all three middle schools and the high school teach French. The middle schools have levels one and two, and then the high school offers levels one through five.
Thank you. Mr. Fusco.
So this is a little off topic, but somewhat related and considering there's so many of you on the, at the meeting tonight. I was wondering if somebody could just give me a really brief update on the progress toward A S L as being added as an elective, something we discussed in the fall, and if there's any progress that's been made on that topic today.
Sure, so I can jump in. Dr. Hart and myself met with Mrs. Vinky Heim and also Melissa Hall, who works at North Penn, you know, really in the context of, you know, she does a wide variety of tasks for our students. So we've discussed a little bit about potentially offering in the future American Sign Language one course in elective, but there will be some staffing considerations with that. So right now, you know, just researching the process for the certification and who would be available for that. So we've definitely had some preliminary meetings and are just kind of looking into that at this point in time. And Dr. Hart, feel free to chime in if you have anything else to add.
No, I think you captured that beautifully.
So if we could just have, I think, a follow-up with the committee, just because, you know, this has has been something that we've spoken and asked to kind of start to move forward. I I definitely think there's going to, there's plenty of children who would be interested in learning sign language outside of the traditional languages, French, Spanish. And so, you know, I'd love to kind of hear what the barriers are. I heard a couple of them in what Ms. Early just described, but if we could kind of maybe, and you can touch base with us outside of this meeting, just so we can hear what the barriers are as you see them, to start to move forward and have a timeline for that. Like, is that fall of twenty twenty-three? Is that, you know? I'd like to just follow up on that at a later time.
No, we'd be very happy to do that.
Great, thanks, guys.
Okay, there are no other questions, then I believe we, oh, do we need to move this forward? Because I think I saw math next. Are we going to move Dr. Waters? Are we going to move everything forward at one time? Are we going to go one at a time?
Sure, we can wait if you want to do the math and then move everything forward.
I don't foresee any objections to any of these at this point, so.
Okay, all right. So we will wait and move everything forward and look at middle school math.
Okay, thank you so much. It's great to be here this evening. As Dr. Hart said, I'm Donna Dome. I'm the Secondary STEM Curriculum Supervisor. And with me tonight also in helping with this presentation, are secondary math learning coaches, Melinda Lyon and Rebecca Russo. So we're presenting a new resource for our seventh and eighth grade students that are in the grade level courses that prepare them for Algebra I. So next slide. So we'd like to share with you about the journey that we've taken this year. We began back in September, and we wanted to build off of the work that Elementary had just completed in this last year. We began with a focus group that included teachers, learning coaches, and special education. And we assessed that current status of our current resources, and our current resources did expire back in twenty eighteen, looking at our instructional practices and our assessment data. We looked at Elementary's mathematics vision and their belief statements, and that helped to ground our work as well. We researched best practices from what works Clearinghouse, National Center on Intensive Intervention, and working with the science of math. Ed Reports is an invaluable website that helps us at least start our journey on where to look. So that helped us with that. And our rating scale that we used in the process, we used a robust scale that included lesson design, online platforms, adaptive practice, opportunities for remediation and enrichment and assessment. And then that small focus group did an awful lot of work between the months of September and January. And then in January, really proud to say that we grew our group of twelve to forty-six. And that group of forty-six included teachers across all three grade bands, administrators, special education, E L D, parents, and technology as well. Next slide. So the mathematics vision statement, this was presented last year by Elementary, and this helped to ground our work. And I think it's important to note that this vision statement also connects to the goals in our comprehensive plan for academic excellence, equity access, cultural responsiveness, and future ready. Next slide. Our group also then started with these belief statements. Elementary had presented one through five that we felt spoke with our student, our middle school and secondary students as well. And we felt it extremely important to add number six because middle school is that bridge between elementary math and the secondary courses whose foundation in algebraic concepts is key to their success moving forward. So that conceptual procedural, procedural flexibility in both concrete and abstract concepts. Next slide. So with the work that we done and looking at all of the vendors, we were able to narrow it down to five that met the demands of our curriculum that is already written. So it's a resource to support that, but also met the needs of our students. And we were able to narrow down to these five. In the month of February, the larger group, the group of forty-six, was able to attend virtually presentations of these five, these five publishers. And with the use of our robust learning scale, we then were able to take a deeper dive into these three. And I was really proud of the work that both Melinda and Rebecca did for the deeper dive for teachers to dive further into these three series. So I'm going to toss it over to them to talk a little bit more about it.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Melinda. So I'm here to talk about the deeper dive, the playground sessions that we held. Rebecca and I were able to provide time at all three middle schools for the entire middle school math department. Some of the special education co-teachers and other core team members to really explore the three programs further. Teachers had time to experience the online platforms and get a closer look at the workbooks that go along with the three programs that we were, we had narrowed it down to. The feedback we received from the teachers was that they really appreciated the time to get to ask us questions and get to like send the vendors some questions, discuss them with colleagues right there and then, and dive deeper into the potential programs together. And I'll let Donna continue.
So following those deeper dives, we did have a final meeting to review all the feedback, allow teachers to discuss their thoughts together, break out rooms, and the feedback overwhelmingly led us to choose Reveal Math. So as you can see here from the resource highlights, it offers a blend of both print and digital. We really like the Desmos calculator because P D E is going to be using that on P S S A's and Keystone's moving forward. It's a student-centered model focusing on D I X course, which closely aligns with the same structure that I already uses at the elementary level. And the embedded assessments and adaptive practice really help to meet the needs of our students with a lot of the work that our teachers are doing in helping to support skills that students have lost through the last few years. So there is an assessment builder and an Alex program, which provides individualized instruction and data collection. And I'm going to ask Rebecca just to speak briefly to the Alex program that comes with this as well.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So like Donna said, it is an adaptive online learning program. It does provide an individualized learning pathway for each student, and it is also connected to that Reveal Core Instruction Program. Students would receive a personalized learning experience where they could receive remediation or enrichment within their set of needs. So the program also provides a long list of data that teachers can gather and be assisted by in differentiating their classroom instruction.
Great, thank you. We're very excited to have a rigorous curriculum resource where we share a common language, where there are worked examples, as it says there, expectations, goals, and meaningful learning for all students. A big component also is how well it integrates with Canvas, as well as one of the last points there that we've put on there. So thank you so much, and we're happy to answer any questions. I thought Mr. Fusco may have had a hand up. Happy to answer any.
Yes, Mr. Fusco, why don't you go ahead, and then I have a couple of questions.
Okay, so one thing that I'm very curious about is with this math program, with any math program, is how much of it is is drill and practice versus actually applying skills in a practical way? And with, that can be digital, right? I mean, there's certainly, you know, it's, it seems like it has a pretty robust digital component to it. But students actually taking concepts and applying them to something where they can integrate other modalities or other parts of their brain. Because what I do see is a lot of drill and practice with a lot of what we do. And there is, my opinion here, is there's a disconnect between, you know, what you're doing and why you're doing it, which I think has a lot to do with retention issues and translating these skills. You know, year after year, certainly, you know, our P S S A results this past year because of the pandemic certainly merit some real refined focus on what we're doing to build these skills back up for these kids. And, you know, I would like to see that we are buying curriculum and implementing programs that really go that next step, not just, you know, here's an operation, learn how to do it step by step, and then explain your thinking, right? Okay, there's that, and we know why there's that. But what else is there to this program that allows students to, in a fun and engaging way, actually use these skills to do something that they can look at and like show somebody? And I'll give you a quick example. I don't remember what the program was, but Roman is doing an algebra class this year, my son. And as a side project, it wasn't part of the curriculum, it was just an activity he was given to do for fun, was to do these equations, linear equations, and then they plotted, you know, on a graph. He took it and made a picture out of this graph by plotting all of these different points, and he made a volcano and a house. And I kid you not, the kid kind of taught himself trig because he wanted to make lava, so he had to learn to do a sine wave. So he went on to YouTube. Like, the things where they can take it and make something with it, or take it and do something with it, has a much better success rate of connecting and lasting for students than just that simple. And I don't mean to say simple, because obviously, these programs are sophisticated. But it is still a lot of, you sit down, these are the problems, you do the problems, you close the book, you walk away, and that's it. And I'd like to know what beyond that this program has to offer.
And I'm gonna let Rebecca and Melinda speak to that because they know it intimately. Go ahead.
Yeah, so those are very great points. Yeah. So those are very great points that you brought up. So that was a key focus for us as well. We wanted to make sure we were providing opportunities for student discourse, for group work and for multiple levels of checks for understanding. So the program follows an instructional model where there is a launch. There is an opening question or video and then it goes into an explore section. And this includes a set of online interactive materials. So if a student is learning equations for the first time, there is a balance skill that they can go on and interact and kind of develop their own thinking, which that's then leads into a develop section. And that has a little bit more of the explicit instruction piece which research shows is an effective model and instruction. And then it goes into reflect and practice. So that practice piece is in there, but it's after students have had time to explore, develop their thinking and then have reflection on it. Reveal, we really liked had a lot of reflection. There was a reflection at the beginning of the assessment at the module, excuse me, at the end of the module within each lesson. So it really was promoting students to reflect on their own understanding of each of those topics.
Mr. McBain?
Thank you very much. I was wondering, as a fellow secondary teacher, have we reached the point where Reveal Math has really taken some steps to integrate with an LMS system that we're using, maybe even Infinite Campus? You know, I hate to think of our math teachers sending our students to a Reveal Math activity online and then the teachers there all hours of the night trying to transfer those numbers back over. How far are we along with that integration so far? And when I say we, I mean, how, how much has Reveal Math done to, to meet up with one of these types of systems?
They fully integrate with Canvas.
Oh, that's great news.
100%. And that was one of our, one of the key points. Yep, absolutely. Because teachers right now are doing what you're, what you just explained.
Yeah, I'm very glad to hear that. And I'm glad that that resource is available. No wonder it was overwhelming. Choice. Well done.
So I'm going to, you know, use Mr. Fusco's statements as a springboard to mine related to assessment. If, you know, kind of what he described is engagement around the instructional piece. But then if we flip back to 100% of our assessments are paper pencil and the entire grade is based on just drill and, you know, drill and practice, right? You know, the equation, no application. You know, we're kind of defeating the purpose. So I'm wondering what assessments look like with Reveal and you know, I just want to hear a little bit more about that because we've asked some work or for some workaround assessments and some workaround homework. And so I think those two things and speaking to homework, Alex, I'm familiar with Alex. It's actually used at the, I'm sure you guys know with the college level, they use Alex for some, for actually a lot of different things. I think my, my oldest daughter is using it for Spanish or something right now. So, but I'm wondering again, what our intention is in terms of how we might use that, like, is it going to be assigned for homework? Is it going to be utilized for just practice in school? I'm just wondering kind of what Reveal says about how teachers should utilize that. And I really am wondering about the assessment piece.
Linda, Rebecca, I'll turn it to you, just with that side of it.
And so I can speak to the Alex part. I think that's going to be a conversation as we go through talking about block scheduling and what all that looks like. There's been talk about within if the new block schedule that might, that is being proposed of, you know, having it as a part of the EAT time. So within the school time for students to use it. We did meet with both Reveal and the Alex program representatives and they recommend about an hour of Alex a week. So that would be within incorporated within daily class instruction or within the school, possibly within the school day. So that we would have to take a deeper dive and a deeper look at when that hour would occur. I'm also a part of the homework committee. So I do know that there are conversations about homework so that we'll all, you know, would, would have to be further conversations within that, that piece. As far as assessments, they do have paper and pencil assessments within the Reveal program and also online assessments that are, you know, aligned to the, to their curriculum.
I guess I'm wondering, not just about being paper pencil online, but the actual assessment, the content of it. Is it a performance based task? Is it a, you know, just straight, I'm answering the equation type test? Is there an application piece? Is there, is there an intention for us to shift more towards having a diversification of what assessments look like for students so that it isn't all just based on that high stakes final exam? And I wonder, Dr. Bauer, currently, the final exam is worth what percentage of grade, of the grade across secondary?
16% for the high school. And Rachel and Donna, are we at 10 still for the middle school?
I believe so.
Yeah, that switched last year amidst the pandemic.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, but, but within that, right? You still have a lot of quizzes being given, a lot of unit tests being given. Having two high schoolers, most of their grades are based on test. I don't know if Mr. Fusco's experience is different than mine, but that's what we're leaning on the most, more than more of those performance based opportunities. And I'm just wondering, you know, I want teachers to be able to have that flexibility to be able to incorporate more of those types of assessments so that those who are not good test takers have other ways to show their learning, right? So we talk about that relevancy for children. What are the ways they can show their learning aside from just sitting down and memorizing things or that kind of thing? Mr. Fusco?
Well, actually, I probably should wait till I get an answer before I even ask my question. It's more of a follow up. So the question being, you know, what, if any, like kind of performance based assessments are there in this program?
Right. Right. The assessment varies greatly with performance based paper pencil. So all of them are there. It also still allows, this program also still allows for some teacher autonomy as well. So as they see the performance test, they're able to build it into their program as well for students, which integrates with Canvas and all like it. I mean, to use the, the teacher side of things when it's working with a module and going through the launch and and the activities and the practice. And then there's even a section that teachers can upload their materials, their performance tasks right to the same thing. So it is going to continue to be a mix because that's what best instructional practices are and best assessment practices are. And that's what we're going to continue to work with, with our teachers on.
So I guess just in terms of like musings, right, to the curriculum department here. You know, for years down it to come, you know, whether, how much we can do some of this planning in-house, you know, what we can look and create possibly our own performance based assessment. So it doesn't necessarily all fall onto a teacher who has a ton of tests to grade and wants to obviously be more creative with the way that they're trying to gauge, you know, the ability for their students to demonstrate proficiency in something that they've learned or not. But to be able to, to have within a department, have within the curriculum department, you know, options for them to choose so that students can have alternative ways of being assessed. I, I'm a pretty big believer in that performance based assessment. And I'm, I'm an opt out parent and have been for a number of years. Because I have a personal belief about, you know, the the way in which we instruct, the way in which we assess and the reasons for which we do those things, right? And, you know, as again philosophically, personally, you know, I'm much more interested in student learning and retention. And this may cause my seat eventually, but then I am a test scores, right? Like they're not necessarily reflective of learning, you know. Retention to me is much more indicative of learning than a kid who crams a bunch of information in their head, puts it on a test and then a week later couldn't tell you anything that they learned. And I do believe heavily that performance based assessment that, that activities that engage different modalities in the learning process, in particular with math, because it's an easier way to apply, I think, than some of the other subjects in that manner, that, you know, it would be certainly of interest to me to see our curriculum department sort of help our teachers in that secondary level and particularly, well, no, in both early in elementary and in secondary, figure out how to make the math program a more hands-on experience, both at the learning level and at the assessment level. So thanks.
Rebecca?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly add, the Reveal program does have several formative assessments. What we are looking for is multiple checks for understanding. It does include math probes at the beginning of each module and within the module, it does have applied problems within the practice component. Those applied problems do usually have an accompanying animation with it. So students can see how the math applies to a real world, real world situation. It also in that practice section does have high order thinking problems that are low floor, high ceiling problems so that all students have access and extend their knowledge. So when we're looking for those multiple ways to assess, those are included, but it's more within each lesson.
That's good. And I, and I, for what it's worth, I like the individualized component of it. I do think that, you know, as you've described, the, I guess more specifically, the digital piece that it does sound like there are application activities for them to engage in. And certainly that is a, a mode that our students are familiar with. So, you know, good things, good things. So thank you.
I am wondering, because the program was not, you did a deep dive, but was it piloted with students or with teachers or was it piloted with students or teachers?
Some lessons were and pieces of it were, just due to the timeline. What we had done is we reached out to other districts in this, that are using the program and sought the feedback from them. So we've gotten to do our, our deep dive and then we were able to work with other schools as well.
And who in our area is currently utilizing the program?
Well, in our direct area, many people are going through the same process. We are about a year or two out. So they're going to be looking to us. I know that. We had worked with North Pocono specifically for Reveal. And then most recently, Pen Ridge just adopted as well at Algebra I and Algebra II.
And what's the cost of the program?
We are able to expand it over two years. It is approximately $260,000, which was an $80,000 reduction in the, from the first quote to the next. And it's an eight year license.
So it's an eight, eight year license inside, including the consumables or for, for the entire eight years?
Correct.
Are there other questions from the committee?
Uh, Dr. G, I, I don't have a question. I just want to say that I'm enjoying this robust discourse that we're having. You know, I, for even parents at home who may not know some of the things and I'm, I'm just glad to have the expertise of my colleagues, Mr. Fusco, Mr. McBain and Dr. G, because they're teachers as well. In addition to having children in the district. So I'm enjoying this and I just basically, and the presenters, you are answering well, maybe not as well as some of them think, but at least you're giving us some answers and something to think about. And I, I really appreciate the student centered framework on equity that you mentioned and the inclusiveness of all cultures with the French language that they're taking in African French as well. Because that wasn't even thought about in the past. So I'm glad you're going with that particular company. And I love the visionary belief statements that you listed and you highlighted the bullet six, but I looked at and I highlighted bullet five, where it says that understanding is struggle and it's okay. So I like that. And I hope that we work with students to know that so that they don't feel because I'm struggling, I'm a failure. So that's all I have, Dr. G.
Uh, Dr. Hart? I'm sorry, just want to say thank you, Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell for that and for her transparency as always. We, we recognize that we're a tough crowd at EAST.
And I just wanted to say something. I wanted to say you're doing a good job. So we're doing great. All right. It's not.
This is just who we are. This is just who we are.
And I'm saying that, I mean, yeah, they're doing great, but they need to hear from people like you who know the stuff. So that they can go back and, and, and research what they need to add or what they don't know because they're giving good answers, but you're making them, you're pushing them and challenging them. And I like that. That's all.
And maybe the takeaway about that is that, you know, we want you to think outside the box. To go beyond what the norm is and really, you know, challenge yourselves to do those things that maybe other districts would be frankly too scared to try, right? Because of the laser focus on making sure that kids are ready to take the PSSA on April 15th or 18th or whatever it is, you know, because everything is hinged on the scores. Like this is not necessarily the group that you're talking to here. And just, you know, I hope that that maybe is the takeaway, not that you think we're being critical, because we're not, we're just asking.
And I like what you wrote up about the performance based assessment versus the pen and paper assessment. So it all, it's all good. And I think it's been a good discourse.
Melinda, the slide?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I agree and I, I love discourses like this. And I just want to say that having worked with and really researched this, this product with the teachers, they are all very excited to take a deep dive and to really expand their practices and to follow this, to follow this program and really, you know, engage students and have that discourse. So the teachers are excited and ready to put in the work. So I think you'll be very pleased.
So just speaking of teacher excitement, I just, I will make this last statement regarding professional development. I think we all know you can buy whatever resource that you want to buy or purchase, but you have to invest in instruction and an instructional framework and be clear about what, what the committee has decided in mathematical instruction should look like. Is it tied to the standards of mathematical practice? Is it, and to what extent are we investing in our teachers having a high level of professional development, not just on the, not just on the resource, not just like a flip through of like from the company of like, here's the resource, but real professional development around teaching math to all students. And as, you know, if we want to push that limit of real deeper learning, which is when, you know, as we know, students can transfer that knowledge, then we need to invest in our teachers. And so I'm hoping with a $260,000 price mark that this comes, one, with some professional development. And that we've also even looked at professional development outside of the company to determine what we need to support our teachers and kind of thinking outside the back box and pushing those mathematical practices forward. Dr. Hart?
I just wanted to add, and I, on a couple of points that you've raised, Dr. G, I think one, and I know that we may have talked about this a little bit ago, but I think it's perfect just to kind of reiterate that we were really intentional in making sure that every math teacher had an opportunity to get their hands on this resource, to take a deep dive, to look at the resource through the lens of the students with whom they are currently working, with whom they may be working as well. And so I do think the idea of, so when Melinda says like people are excited, they're not excited about an intellectual idea. They're really excited about materials and resources that they really have spent some time with. And there were definitely guiding questions in those playground sessions that Rebecca and Melinda facilitated to help people really think about what is it that really works well for this? What does it look like for professional development? If you think about what you're currently doing, what are some things we might want to be doing differently? I also think the conversation regarding block scheduling and what that looks like along with this is a really powerful kind of partnership. And so definitely we have work to do, absolutely. But I do think the timing of doing that together will really ensure that we are really implementing a really robust program for all students, regardless of kind of where they are on that math. implementing a really robust program for all students, regardless of kind of where they are on that math continuum.
So just to recap for the public, Ms. Jo, this is going to cover what grade levels? And, because we've been talking about math for a while, what grade levels?
This is for seventh and eighth grades. The students who are in 2075 and 2076, which is your pre-algebra 5-0, pre-algebra 6-0, and also eighth grade, 2085 and 2106A, which is your algebra concepts and algebra operations and equations. So those are on the on-grade level and honors grade level. It's really the courses that lead into Algebra One. Algebra One is not part of this year's adoption. Because next year, part of, part of what we're going to be doing next year as well is taking a deeper dive into Algebra One, how our students are doing in Algebra One, how we're preparing them for courses beyond Algebra One as well. So that, that is, that's more to, so I'll probably see you next year around this time.
Okay. Where are we, Dr. Hart, Dr. Water?
We are ready to now the representations.
Oh, wait, we have to move.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes. Thank you. What would we do without you?
Dr. G would never remember to approve the minutes. That's what I would do.
I was going to say, we need to move this forward. So I moved that we move this forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, so this would be moving forward the world language curriculum as well as the math curriculum. And we have a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, motion passes. And we are going to be moving on to the presentations. Thank you to those of you who are presenting related to the world language and math. You, of course, can feel that you may go and that you would not, we will not hold you hostage on here. So thank you very much and we will see you again at a later time.
Great job, curriculum. Thank you for coming tonight. Have a good one.
Great job. Have a good night.
All right. So I know Dr. Hart's going to do the honors, but we are going to be starting off with our presentation from Penbrook. And Dr. Hart, would you like to introduce Dr. Jenkins and Mrs. Whalen?
I'm very happy to do that as well. So what I thought I would do is give a quick overview of the three presentations. I said in the very beginning of some of the reoccurring themes that you're going to hear moving forward. So I'm delighted for those folks at home who may be meeting Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Whalen for the very first time, principal and assistant principal at Penbrook Middle School. They will be sharing their cultural proficiency and equity work this year. Then we're going to transition to elementary school. And Mr. Bashal from Greenwich Square is going to talk about his work. And then we're going to wrap up the evening with Dan Grumeyer from Northbridge. Jim Galante really wanted to be here this evening. Unfortunately, he's out of town to attend a funeral. So I know that Dan will represent him and all the great work that's happening at Northbridge incredibly well. So we've chatted beforehand, each school will present. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, and then we'll transition to the individual schools afterwards. So Dr. Jenkins, Ms. Whalen, turn it over to you.
Thank you all for allowing us to present our cultural proficiency work here for you tonight. Next slide. We are the Lancers and you're going to see why we are Penbrook proud and North Penn strong. Next slide. We're going to talk about our goals today. We have an academic goal in math advancement. We have a parent engagement goal, social emotional learning goal, and of course, the climate, culture and equity goal. And we're going to tell our story through our goals. So looking at each goal and how it connects to cultural proficiency and equity. And it starts with our teachers and our staff doing the work, preparing lessons, reflecting on their work to create lessons that teach the students can learn from, grow from, engage in. Also really excited about what they're doing and we'll talk about that a little later. Those teachers are supporting a diverse group of students. So I wanted to share the breakdown of our ethnicities. We are serving 839 students, 75 teachers are at that task. And I wanted to point out that we do have two, only two teachers of color. And so it's definitely an area that we want to focus on. I know it's a district goal, it's a building goal as well to improve that so that we are reflective of our student body. So starting with our first goal, what we love to do is work with our math teachers this year in our 2075 class and give them strategies that they could implement to improve the, the performance of our Black and multiracial students. And then we would look at obviously moving them from that lower track to their upper track and, and the next school year, starting from a baseline of 12. And we're happy to say that we were able to move four students forward from the lower track class and movement forth to a higher level. And some of this work was possible by a $10,000 grant that we received from Patton. And that was to implement MTSS in the middle school. What they asked us to do was to have a case study student. And so we had a case study student inside a math classroom, the 275, 2075 class. But all the kids received the intervention. And we watched the growth of this one particular student. And we continue to work with that student, even though she's not in math anymore, now that we're in the second semester. But we were very successful. The class was successful, the intervention was successful. And the supervisor of STEM said, this is working. Let's see it work in the rest of the buildings in our district. So sharing the success, those implements, implementation of those strategies get being given to kids in the Penfield and the Penborough, Pen Dale schools. I don't have the data on how that went. I did ask about that. I think we're in a phase of testing the kid now, so we'll have that feedback soon. But excited about what's happening in that, in that area. Talking a little bit about our parent engagement goal. We have the announcements and newsletters that go out regularly to our parents, of course. We offered a career day to our eighth grade students this year, where parents were invited in and participated and presenting career options for students. We have a really well-working relationship with our Home and School Association. One of the things that we did was reach out to our parents to say, hey, our students, and this came from the students, they're interested in learning more about the students that they come and work with every day. The different cultures and nationalities, the students made their request. So I put out the request to parents to say, do you or do you have somebody that might be interested? And we put together a summary program to talk about this particular culture and so that we can learn more. So I'm looking forward to getting more feedback from parents and, and moving in that direction. We have a parent from the association or No Place for Hate representation, and I'll talk a little more, more about that later. Our high parents are Nancy Pusher and Convy Rudnick. And they are doing a great job with us and so excited about the work that we're accomplishing. The first thing there is the one book, one school. And we're looking at getting a tab book that our entire community, our community can read together. So that would be not only our teachers, our staff, our kitchen staff, our facilities, but also parents and community members, librarians and extended. So we'd have that connection with our community. The task force also pushed forward work in the school-wide viewing of Hidden Figures. We did that last week. It was wonderful. I got really great feedback from the parent, from the students and from the teachers. You'll see there the bulletin board. We have a diversity wall. So our diversity wall has the Hidden Figures timeline. And that was produced by the task force. And it was just really excellent programming. The kids were able to get their feedback and we posted that feedback also on our diversity wall. Next slide. Some of our other diversity walls include our Wall of Dreams. And then next slide, we have our Black History Month and Women's History Month. Displays. Next slide. For our social emotional learning goal, we have three areas that I like to highlight. First is working with the Mind in Your Mind company. And what we did was have them come in and do a presentation for our students on mental health. Well-received, students were really engaged and sharing with the presenter. And so we had that presenter, had the company center presenter for our parents. We had 20 parents present in the presentation. And then over a hundred of joined us online. And they talked about the presentation to students on mental health and how parents can recognize signs and what they can do to support their children. We also had them come in for our teachers, but that was a focus on mindfulness. So that teachers, so that the teachers would have tools to help deal with stress and anxiety and the things that are on the adults' mind. We talk about taking care of the kids, we take care of our teachers as well. And that comes through for us. We have some monthly programming opportunities that we give to teachers in conjunction with our Home and School Association. And what you see there is a picture of our wellness room. We call it the Zended. It has an area, it's just a tranquil place that teachers can come to, can de-stress, decompress and kind of rejuvenate to get back to work or at the end of the day or at their break, a time, a place that they could step away. So we're really excited about that and the use of that for teachers for their own mental health. For our social emotional learning, as it reflects our clubs and activities, we all, we are looking to meet every child's need. And so we definitely encourage kids, of all the activities we have here, if we are not offering something you're interested in, please let us know and let's make it happen. And so we have the Rainbow Alliance Club, we have our Voices of Power Club. This year new is our Cultural Cooking Club. Our web where everybody belongs, that program sponsors our Spirit Days. Next slide. Next slide. And in our Spirit Days, the kids really, they really get involved. I would say like 80%, and I wonder what Ms. Whalen would say. We watch them just get excited about the Spirit Day, get engaged and get involved. Next slide. And our teachers participate as well. So we're working on that emotional health and that connectedness and get us, getting us back to some normalcy. Keeping people excited in the midst of stress and, and mental health issues. So, so we're excited about that. Next slide. We recently had our Red and Blue Day. It's an annual event that the students participated. Teachers come alongside and participate. And you can see again, the togetherness, the working together, the cooperation, the participation that we had in the event. It just was a blast all day long. And I think really good feedback, something that has always happened and will continue to happen because it builds community. We talked about pleasant activities. We do have, according to the student feedback, about 70% of our students involved in pleasant activities or sport at Penbrook. And every year, we would look to increase that number. One of those activities is our National Junior Honor Society. And you'll see there the numbers, participants each year. I wanted to point out in the 2020, 2021 school year is when our advisors made an intentional press to seek out students that were eligible that had not applied. And so this was, they, they knew that, they maybe didn't know that they could apply, but we sought them out, we talked them through the application process, encouraged them to apply, and we increased our numbers there. I wanted to point out that at Penbrook, we require a 3.5 GPA, which is higher than the national requirement, which is a 3.0. Onto our climate, culture and equity goal. There, there are a couple of things that I want to point out in how we accomplish that goal. And one was to be a student for the day. I had an opportunity to put on my hoodie and, and my Crocs and walk around following, shadowing a student, going through the library, the block schedule, went to all four blocks, got to engage with teachers from a student perspective and able to take that feedback. It was a great learning experience. And able to take that feedback back to our teachers to give them a glimpse that, which I had into the life of a student at Penbrook. We also run something called Chit Chat Groups. And that's a group of students selected by, by our guidance council. And the goal is to meet with every student at some point. So we have different groups that come together on a weekly basis to talk to the principal about what we're doing well, where we need to improve. And then we also talk about bullying and we talk about race. So it's great feedback on an intimate level to hear from our students and give them a voice. We also practice student voice in several other ways this year so far. One was with the student survey, which we gave twice this year, will give again in May. And it's on a broader scale of what we're doing good, where we need to improve, how we make this a school that you want to come to every day. We talked to kids, and this actually happened yesterday, about the dress code. We had a conversation about a potential change in the direct dress code. And we also met with a group of students to talk about the proposed middle school schedule. And, and culture, I wanted to point out that we're very intentional this year about the inclusiveness of our LGBTQ+ program and students and supporting them. So we do have the Rainbow Alliance for our students. You'll see there that this year they put up a bulletin board on our diversity wall. We have a large wall for our diversity wall. And we will be participating in special and professional development in our next in-service, where we'll have a presenter teaching us about pronouns, teaching us about experiences, giving us data and statistics, and then giving us ways that we can support our students and have them have a safe and, and a good experience here at Penbrook. Like the other buildings, we are implementing restorative practices and the No Place for Hate. Next slide. We are well underway with our No Place for Hate work. Initially, we had to have all students sign a pledge. So we had our pledge posted around the school. We set up times that students could all sign the pledge. And we posted those around the school. And you're required to do three lessons. So we have done two of our three lessons so far. The first one on dress code. The second one on identity-based bullying. And our third lesson is something that the students are working on to talk about being a good human. We had these conversations about why can't people just leave people alone and let them be who they want to be? Mostly speaking to our LGBTQ+ community. And so the idea was like, just be a good human. Let's feel empathy with, for one another. And so I'm really excited about that work and looking forward to what the kids produce and how the students engage in that No Place for Hate work. Next slide. Continuing with our diversity and displays, we have a neurodiversity display case presented. It now has actually changed to autism awareness. So this is our display right outside the main office. And we keep that relevant to what's happening monthly and culturally in the world. Next slide. So more importantly, most importantly, what's happening in our classrooms? Next slide. We ask for teachers to talk about, you've been learning for two years now. We've been diving deep, as the math presentation said, into the cultural proficiency work. So what is happening in your classrooms? And so we posted a couple of the quotes that teachers shared. I just want to point out a couple and I'll read those to you. "Students craft an addendum to the textbook on what's not in my textbook to tell stories of marginalized African-Americans, women, Latinx, LGBTQ, et cetera." This was created in partnership with our librarian and this happened during our ninth grade history research project assignment. In reading, the teacher knows I have displayed books from my class library for Read 180 at the front of my classroom. And I change it out each month depending on what we are celebrating. We have had and will have displays for Native American history, Hispanic heritage, Black history, autism awareness and women's history. And one more that I like to point out amongst the ones that are presented. is in my algebra classes, we highlight one mathematician engineer each week. These individuals are from diverse backgrounds, which helps students see themselves reflected in the classroom. And again, that's in there. So we're really proud of what the teachers are doing. And we are holding them accountable to the work that is the expectation of the district as we continue to close the gap and give students a wonderful experience, especially here at Pembroke. Next slide. One of the things to try to encourage the teachers, because some of them feel like, you know, what am I supposed to do with my subject? And sometimes it's not necessarily your subject, it's how you relate and respond to students. And so we gave an equity checklist to our teachers to kind of self-reflex on what they're doing and what they could be doing. So they received this and I just wanted to point out, I put three here of examples of what's on the equity checklist as simple enough that every teacher could be influenced. Like welcoming students by name as they enter the classroom. Or learning to use displays that have students' heritage or language. And using class building and team building activities to promote peer support for academic achievement. These are ways to create equitable classrooms. And so we encourage our teachers and we look for these things to happen in our classrooms. Next slide. So I talked about the look for, is that gives Ms. Whalen and I an opportunity to, you know, see if the bulletin board represents students in the classroom, see how classroom is organized, look at class participation, look at how you're calling on students. So we're very intentional about looking at those things and giving teachers feedback. I posted here, took a picture of our library display, which also changes with the holidays that or the focus area of a particular month or event. In our post-observations, I kind of alluded to this, but when we have an observation and then we meet with our teachers, we're asking them what they do with the CPNE information that they've learned. And we're also asking them intentionally, what do you do to build relationships with students? And we have those conversations and we're gathering that information to share across the different disciplines. And where I'd like to end is our Student of the Month, next slide. You know, we practice that diversity is intentional. I'm making it clear to the teachers, it doesn't just happen. You don't just ask volunteers or put out a list or put out a sign and sheet. Like we have to make sure we're speaking our students. And one way that's happening is in our Student of the Month. At Student of the Month, we're not looking at the highest achiever or the kid that answers the most questions in class. We're looking at really well-rounded students and being intentionally diverse about those options. And we have this opportunity to celebrate our students on a monthly basis. So I'm really happy and proud about the work that the teams come together and bring forth these students to celebrate. Next slide. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what's happening at the Brook. And I would love to answer any questions you may have.
I'll chime in if it's all right there. Dr. Jenkins, excellent work, I must say. I tell you, I saw one of those activities, I think they're called call sticks, where you write the names of students on popsicle sticks and you pull one out to make sure it's a random selection. For April Fools, my class decided they would steal their popsicle stick, so I couldn't call anybody. But I am interested to know, when you've had those conversations with students, you know, what kinds of things have you heard particularly about, for example, the middle school schedule? You know, it's a hot topic, I wonder if you could fill us in on what students have been saying?
Absolutely. They were critical of the, the presentation of what we're considering. They liked that, they had concerns about the semester classes where they would only get the one class and then they may not have it the next year until the following semester. That was a huge concern, so they were glad to see that that wouldn't be an issue. A lot of the presentations to the parent, I mean, to the adults, they were saying, this is going to be too confusing for the kids. So that was definitely a question that I had to ask the kids. And they said, maybe for the first week, but we'll handle it, like we just need to adjust and that'll be fine. So overall, they're like, okay, this will be fine. This A/B thing and this blue white thing, we'll figure it out. But overall, they like their post-keeper taking.
Thank you so much.
I'll just chime in too. So there's a tremendous amount to be excited about that you just discussed. I was going to point out two of my personal favorites, things that you said the teachers are doing. I love highlighting mathematicians and engineers for a number of reasons. And I like, obviously, the role of, you know, that can play for a student who can picture themselves and they see somebody who looks like them. And, but just in general, just putting engineers and mathematicians out there as role models across the board, because there's such a focus on entertainers and athletes and everything. So I think that's, that's tremendous. And I also was really excited about what's not in my textbook, what a creative approach that is to really thinking through, I'm thinking like history and that's it. So really wonderful stuff. I did, I took one question and it's maybe as much for Dr. Bauer as you or whomever. And it's about National Junior Honor Society and actually National Honor Society, right? So we have a higher criteria than what the national standard is. And there's been some public discussion about this, because there's been, I believe, some discussion about changing that requirement. And what I'm wondering first and foremost, and I think Dr. Bauer could probably answer this maybe a little better since he's a former high school principal. What benefit does a student get from being a member of the National Honor Society? Like what, they obviously put work in and there's recognition, you know, and bragging rights or whatever. But what beyond that is it that membership in National Honor Society does for a student?
For me... I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in for a second. Mr. Fusco, sure, you're aware, Dr. Bauer, I believe, lost power, so I'm sure he'll answer when he gets on.
I'm back.
Maybe, Dr., oh, you're back, okay.
Yep.
I've seen some lightning on people's video.
Yeah.
Right, Grunmeyer, I saw some of yours.
Still don't have power, but I have a cell phone, so I'm on my phone. But yes, great question, Mr. Fusco. And honestly, National Honor Society, it has the greatest name recognition amongst honor societies, that's for sure. And I think most students and teachers for that matter would tell you it's simply a resume builder. It's certain, yeah, it's an honor.
It's an honor and specifically it's a resume builder. So this is my point on this, right? My daughter was a member of National Junior Honor Society, has been invited to be in the National Honor Society. And I understand that there are those who see it as like the select privilege, you know, and bragging rights. But the practice of being more selective than the national average has the consequence of just making less North Penn students seem competitive on a resume compared to other students in other districts, right? I mean, it's good for North Penn, you know, as a district to say, yeah, no, we have higher standards for our kids. But it doesn't really translate in my mind to any benefit to the students themselves, right? By being more selective. If anything, it's a problem for students who have a 3.25 or a 3.3 or a 3.0 that in another district would be able to put that on a college transcript and show that, you know, it's a leg up for maybe getting into a school that they want or getting a little extra, you know, financial resources from the school to come, whatever that looks like. So why do we make it harder for our kids to enjoy that benefit when compared to other students? Because that to me seems like an equity issue as well.
So, yeah, so believe it or not, our GPA requirements, and you were, I think, speaking specifically about the high school, are more aligned with the national standard than you might expect. So in North Penn, our GPA is calculated very differently than the average high school. And that's why a lot of colleges at this point calculate their own GPAs. We could probably have Mr. Brett come on and talk a little bit about it now. But an unweighted GPA of a 3.0, which is a B average, is very comparable to our weighted GPA requirement for National Honor Society at the high school. So while we say the national standard is 3.0, ours aligns with a 3.0 unwitted, if that makes sense.
Does that make a difference to like a college? Are they doing that kind of granular investigating into a student resume or application? I honestly don't know, like maybe Dr. Campbell would know that.
I mean, I'm sure Dr. Campbell could speak to it, but having a, having a college student, I didn't see that. And I just went through this process.
I was going to say, no, doesn't make a difference, they aren't looking to that extent.
Yeah, I just, I guess it's kind of just the way that I view it, is if we can make it more accessible to more students, I don't know why we wouldn't. I just think that if it helps, you know, in that post-secondary transition process and it really doesn't take anything away from anyone else other than the exclusivity of it, right? Then it's something we should be considering, just making that match. I mean, like I said, unless the universities would look at that and be able to do their own math and call it fraudulent or whatever. That's, again, just my opinion, but I think it's certainly worth considering.
What, what are our, I know we were talking about the, the middle schools and the middle schools just kind of realigned themselves and I believe are all on the same page at this point relative to the National Honor Society. So what is the high schools? Is it aligned now with our middle schools?
It is under review right now as a result of the conversation that Mr. Fusco just spoke of. So the, when Mr. Hassler presented from Pendale about the changes, Dr. G, you may recall, I think you mentioned having the high school take a look at it. So they are actually in the midst of taking a look at their GPA requirements now.
Okay. So back to Dr. Jenkins for a moment. I did want, thank you, Dr. Bauer. I'll just note that one of my favorite things from your presentation was the kind of walking in the students' shoes. Man, I think we all need to do that. Walking in the students' shoes and walking in the teacher's shoes. We could do those two things. You know, I think we could all recalibrate our educational system right now. But I appreciated that you took the time to do that, to really see it from the point of view of what that feels like for a student, what block scheduling feels like for a student so that you can better speak to it. So I appreciated a lot of the things that you said, I think my colleagues spoke to them. But that was something for me that really stood out from your presentation. So I thank you and Ms. Whalen for the work that you're doing there together. You seem like a great team, so keep up the good work there. And I believe Dr. Lewis Campbell has some comments as well.
Yes, and I'll be brief. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, I like that too. Being a student for the day, I did want to know from you, those students that were, you sought out, that you made it intentional to let them know that they qualified to be in that AP or that group. How are they doing, do you know? Are they still maintaining their grades? Are they still striving or what?
Right, so those students would be 10th graders now. They move forward.
Okay.
I would assume that they're doing well. They, you know, like we kind of set up their rigorous schedule, rigorous opportunity is how we looked at it. And then they continue that work, so I would assume that they're doing well at the high school.
In my experience, I know that like 10th graders right now are just getting invited to join National Honor Society, so.
Thank you. So also, you said you worked with students and they came up with some topics about a potential dress code change. Could you give me an idea, what are they talking about changing, about the attire? I'm real interested in that.
They, they want to be able to show their bellies, that was a big one. So we talked a lot about that. That was the biggest change. Oh, the other part is equity. So they feel like we pick on girls more, there are more violations for girls than there are for boys. And so they wanted to see that like equalized, for sure. Those are the two major things, bellies and equalization.
Okay. And I would, I sort of agree that girls are always targeted with what they're wearing, but maybe that's a conversation that, like, have a girls' assembly and they all can talk about it and see what they think. But also, I wanted to ask you about, or say, that I know the students enjoyed that movie Hidden Figures, because all the young people that went to see it when it first came out, they loved the idea of finding out about these women that had done these things in that STEM field that nobody ever talked about. So I'm glad about that. And minding your mind, I like what you set aside to take care of your teachers so they have a time to do mindfulness meditation and they have a time to decompress as well. And it shows that you care about them as well, because we do a lot for our students in terms of making sure they're able to go into a room and calm down and do whatever. But I like the setup you had for your teachers, so thank you.
Yeah, that's really important to Ms. Whalen and I. We recognize that if they're not okay, the kids aren't going to be okay. So it's very important, their, their mental health, their decompression, they're being able to compartmentalize this happening at home and in their lives and be 100% available for the kids. And that takes a lot of mental stress. And so we want to recognize and support our teachers and let them know that we love them. I mean, we talked about that, we love them and we want them to do their best.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. As, as an aside, my colleague is setting up a puppy and kitten room for her, for their teacher. So, you know, it sounds like a good idea to me, playing with puppies and kittens, who wouldn't make, who wouldn't, that would make everyone happy.
I just wanted to add really quickly before we switch, Dr. Jenkins, excellent job. I think the things you're doing are awesome. And I also, to your point, Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell, I think the first time I went to Pembroke, I saw that Zen Den and I remember thinking like, this is so cool, because it is really important to take care of the staff just as much as we, you know, need to take care of our students. So I love that you have that. And I also love, you know, the walking in your shoes and you getting to be comfy that day, but really seeing it from their perspective. I know recently Dr. Bauer did something similar over at Pendale and spent the day with one of our music teachers, Erica Millboard, and it was great. I know they were able to kind of think about strategies and kids in the hallway who are maybe, you know, using some inappropriate language and they came up with some different ways to help. But it was also really great feedback. So love that you had that in your presentation as well. Just wanted to tell you, awesome job. So I know we are ready to move to elementary land. And Mr. Bashaw did his presentation a little differently. Instead of using slides, he kind of used some more, which is a pretty cool way to present. So Jason, you want to tell us about Gwinnett Square?
Yeah, here we go. Well, first off, I want to say, Dr. Jenkins, great job, Mrs. Whalen's great job. I have students coming to your school, so it's exciting to hear everything you guys are doing. It's fantastic, because I think it's a smooth transition for our children. Just to let you know, what I have, and I've been working on this for months, because that's the kind of person I am, but I, this is just the icing on the cake. There are so many more things that are going on that are in the classrooms that I don't have in here. But Dr. Lewis Campbell was able to come over today. And I just want to thank her very much for taking the time to walk around the building, taking pictures, being part of the classrooms and the, just the excitement that was going on. So thank you very much. It was not the best day to be out driving around from school to school, but thank you very much. So this year's goal for me, as the students came back in our current climate, coming out of a pandemic and coming back into a very sterile building, was making sure that the children felt welcome and safe. They're coming back to learn again, but in a totally different way. Most of them were out for a full year, some did a hybrid, but there were also some that haven't seen a building for almost a year and a half. So making them feel welcome, making them feel safe and getting them back into that learning environment was very important to us. So our PBIS mission, and we are one of the last schools moving into positive behaviors intervention supports, is to create an Is to create an inclusive learning community that inspires and empowers students to be caring, confident and well-rounded students. And that mission that I'm talking about right now, you'll see throughout the entire presentation. Before I go into that, if um Mr Gilmer, if you could just quickly click in. The disproportionality workbook is something I'm proud of and I'm working on right now. It is still in uh the works. What I'm doing right now is I'm looking at our data, okay, our demographics. Um our activities, our attendance, our discipline. I'm looking at our ELD, our gifted program, special education program, and I'm looking at where our children fall. And I want to make sure it's equitable across all groups that I have here at Gwinnett Square. And then if not, the question is. Why? That's it. Why? If I don't have an equal distribution of children that are in band or in uh strings. Or in the triathlon, or if I have a very skewed group of kids that are doing well in the star data. Or I have a group of kids that are just not showing up for school, the question is why? And that's what this disproportionality workbook is starting to do for us. So it's in the works. I'm starting it this year. Continuing to add to it as we progress through this year and will continue to add to it um over the summer and into next year. So I can do a side by side comparison for that. Okay, so that's my disproportionality workbook that I'm currently working on. Our demographics have uh remained pretty much the same, uh except for this year, we have gained forty uh new kids. We're really starting to feel that. Um I welcome the children. That's great for us. Anytime you have more kids, that means you don't lose teachers, which is fantastic. The thing is, you just got to get creative and finding the space for those um those classrooms and for those children. So. I'm very happy to have five hundred and ninety nine. We're getting close. We're gonna hit six hundred soon. Uh but we have five hundred and ninety nine students. And in our the bulletin down below, the welcome to our world, it is a world map. And everything starts right there in Lansdale, as you can see. And we um uh surveyed our fifth and sixth graders. And we asked them where their families were from, and you can see from there as the strings go out. All the different countries that their families came from. It really showed us. That we are not just all local. Yes, we may live local. We may live in uh the Gwinnett Square sending area, the North Penn School District, but we all come from around this world. And how it this um bulletin board made the world very small for all of us. It was a great demonstration to our children. Going down right below that really does explain uh then uh to that bulletin board. My ethnic uh breakups, and you can see, you know, again, five ninety nine total enrollment for the twenty one twenty two school year. And which ethnic groups are um are really starting to increase? And are we meeting those uh the needs of those children? Are they equitable across the different activities and events that we have? And are they being reached within our academic uh courses? So uh Dr Waters already stole my thunder and said, yes, I'm using smores. Smores is a newsletter template uh that we uh just started using. I have been sending out GS updates every Sunday. And I've been sending out information about what's going on for the upcoming week. And as you can see, starting in September twenty twenty one, I had a hundred and seventy four people reading it. It's a hundred and seventy four. That was the very first, and that was the whole month, just to give you a a quick uh snapshot. The whole month was a hundred and seventy four. The whole month of October eighty four, November thirty nine, December thirty six. This is information about our school. This is what's gonna be upcoming dates, events, everything that's going on. Prior to the transit uh transition, I had forty eight parents review it in Google Docs. At sending it out through School Messenger, Google Docs, using our Google Suite, and also posting it on our website. Forty eight! Then we switched to smores and look at that, one newsletter. That is one newsletter in January, not the whole month, one newsletter. It hit seven hundred and eighty three people. And as you can see, February, that's um all three um weeks in February, the numbers and all three weeks there in March, all the numbers. It is hitting more and more people and we are getting more and more reactions. Our Twitter feed is up. Um it can be translated into any language you want. It does have analytics, so it tells you from wherever in the world people are actually seeing this, and it's fun. I was showing a. Showing some um teachers where this is coming from. It's coming from some beaches over in uh Europe. Now, I don't know how true that is, but it's right on the beach in Europe and we have some in California and all over the world, but it's really nice. It does really give you an idea of what buttons are being clicked on, so what the. Parents are using, what they're not using, so that we could really adjust what we're giving our parents and what they need. And again, it all can be translated, so fantastic piece of a um well worth the money. Let's put it that way. Welcome newsletter for our new Panthers and their families. We give um our new families a um. Every new family that comes into our school, we give them a PowerPoint that gives them a quick summary of who we are. Um you know, information about the principal, the counselor, school climate coordinator, everything about our school. Um we also give them a swag bag, which is a, you know, drawstring bags, some Gwinnett Square gear, just making them feel welcome. I meet with every single uh new student that comes into the building. You know, having them just feel comfortable, because you know that transition from whatever school, whether it's at elementary, middle or high school. Or even college, that is difficult, that transition. So we want to make it very easy. And I'll be honest with you, sometimes it's harder for the parents. So this PowerPoint that we have, the Google slides we have, I help, Mrs Moore, my school, um. Uh tenant secretary, her and I created this. She gives this out to the families, and let me tell you, they're very appreciative of it, because. All that information is right there, right in one spot. Our parents and equity committee, this is something I'm very, very proud of with the help of Mr Young and Mr Moore. Mr Young is my school climate coordinator, Mr um. Mr Young is my school climate coordinator, Mr Moore is my sixth grade uh ELA social studies teacher. They have helped me. With um the help of Mrs Thomas, we have forty four parent members on our pie committee, forty four. It's 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 amazing. I mean, all the things that are going on here. I was so proud back in September when uh we were still at home. Here I am sitting at home. Um we did a seven thirty or seven thirty meeting. We're si- I'm sitting down in the basement and we're having this meeting. Talking with forty four parents that were involved in this, things we wanted to do to move our building forward. There are notes attached. We don't have to go into that. I do have one of my parents that is actually on the PBIS team. She is awesome, gives us great feedback on where we're going. They contribute to our GS newsletter. We have a cultural corner. In our GS newsletter, every single week we add something more. Um Women's History Month, we just don't do one blurb. We do uh blurbs each month. I'm sorry, we do a blurb. Each week to add more and more to it. Uh they've helped out with the bulletin boards, which you're gonna see down below. They also helped us out with the story walk, which was created by them. This this committee fully run, we support them in any way they need it, but they run with all the activities. Sure Little Kindness by Colleen Brenetti, that was an interactive story walk, which we had in the keyhole. So when the parents came around and dropped their children off and picked them up, the story was right there. Uh the trunk or treat, which we had out back, we had it out back. So when the parents were out there, they were all able to read it with their children. It was actually really, really good. Uh Mr Gilmer, if you could scroll down, these are just examples of bulletin boards, parents came in and created. Not the teachers, the parents came in and did this, and I've given credit to those parents who have done this. They have really jumped in and helped us out. Fantastic job by them. So something that uh we've been going and doing for two years now is our fifth and sixth grade courageous conversations. Courageous conversations are conversations that we as adults are having. Parents, um we do have to get um parental permission. And students are talking um about topics about things that are here at school. Okay, that um they want to talk about what's equitable, what's not equitable. Um they projects include school-wide posting of significant events, creating presentations to proudly display on our new TV monitors. Throughout the school, and they're actually uh beginning to create a newspaper that is unique solely to Gwinnett Square, and they call it the um. No, I I just got it. It was super exciting. It's called the uh. Gimme a second. It's called the Monthly Panther, and they're working on that right now. Those are fifth and sixth graders creating a monthly newspaper. That we're gonna start sending out um amongst the uh the students here at uh Gwinnett Square. So. That um I have Mr Young and Mr Moore, they uh bring the kids down during uh their recess. They do take the the students do give up their recess time to come down and do this. And I have Mrs Moore, one of my secretaries, who takes notes so that Mr Moore and Mr Young can keep conversations going. And it has been going very, very well. Just like Pembroke, we are a no place for hate school. We have created two out of the three um projects. The first um project uh we did, Mrs Vazley and I, we read a book called All Are Welcome. Mrs Vazley and I went into every single class and read this story and talked about inclusivity, diversity and kindness. Now, let me tell you, the conversations we're having in kindergarten are a lot different than the conversations we're having in sixth grade. But let me tell you, the theme was there. And the kids understood it and the conversations were strong. However, when we got to grades four, five and six, we wanted to make sure that to help with the inclusivity and diversity and kindness. And to make sure that it's there, and if we don't see it there, kids had a way of reporting things to myself, Mr Young and Mrs Vazley. And that's through email. That's a quick way, it's a safe way and it's a private way. So what we did was after we were done with our conversations, um and after we were done uh signing the pledge. We had all the kids type our names into Google uh um into Gmail. And once you type it in once and send, those na- our names will automatically pop up with a letter or two. Yes, did we get a lot of emails that day? But it was definitely worth it, because our names are now in there too. Okay, so if they have any questions, concerns, problems, they can easily email us, and they are doing that now. Because they feel safe to do that. Our second um no place for hate activity is what you see right there. It's a gigantic heart. Students brainstorm ways they can show respect to one another. They choose one thing and write it on a small heart that will then become part of the larger heart. And every single one of those um little pieces of paper is something a student wrote. Describing what respect means to them, what it looks like, sounds like and feels like. And Dr Lewis Campbell, you saw that today. That is growing. Um it is, it's almost finished. It is becoming. It it's, it's actually, man, does it warm my heart to see and read what these kids. Feel. You know, about each other, about their friends, about their classmates, and they might not even be friends with that classmate, but you know what? It's another Gwinnett Square Panther, and that's what means so much. Our third activity, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be focusing on an ally or an upstander. We're not there yet. We're still in the planning stages for that. But that'll be the third activity for this year, and then we will be a no place for hate uh school. So we're looking forward to that. Uh a book um myself, my counselor, my inclusion facilitator, along with my school psychologist read uh this year. Was a book called Flooded, and it's a brain-based guide to help children regulate emotions. And this brain-based guides help uh children regulate those emotions. Basically, what I say is. The kids are so upset. Their their brain is like spaghetti right now, and we gotta make it lasagna. In other words, they're thinking, 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 and they can't react rationally. So we gotta calm them down. And what can we do to help them calm down? Mrs Vazley and myself created safe spaces in our offices where they could come down with some work and just relax. We created a sensory room, not just for these children, but also for our autistic support room. We have a huge sensory room. That has lots of different um items in there that was uh was um recommended by OTPT. Our school psych, our guidance counselor, and it continues to grow as the weeks and months um happen. But this is a book that uh I did purchase, one for each staff member, that at the beginning of uh next school year, we will um read this. It's only about a hundred pages and about fifteen of those pages are all strategies you can use within the classroom. So I'm really excited. About going and starting a new school year off with that. Another thing I'm proud of, as most of you know, um I was at Pendale for sixteen years. It's still near and dear to my heart. One of the things that I try to um explain to parents is my vision for their children. Is from kin- I, my vision for their children is kindergarten all the way up to ninth grade. So I'm thinking well beyond. Um elementary school to prepare them for the middle school. And so I'm making connections with the middle school and I'm I'm helping them when we talk about GIPs or IEPs. What uh resources we have, the the plan, um the courses they have, the block scheduling and so forth. So one of the things we're doing right now is the FCS majors sent down um pictures of the monster. And I read uh monster uh pictures, templates, and I read the story to all my first graders, the monster who lost his mean. And after I read that, the kids colored in their monster based on the template. We sent the template up to the ninth grade um FCS majors. And they're coming down next Monday. It was like a four-month project. They're coming down next Monday with an actual stuffed monster. And it's gonna be, and we're gonna reread that book to the first graders, and they are super, super excited about that. So that connection between ninth grade and first grade. I'm also uh seventh grade. They write an informative piece basically talking about what. Sixth graders coming in the seventh grade, what it's gonna look like. We're actually connecting through a um a Google Drive. They're actually writing these pieces, and my sixth graders are actually pure editing them. And seeing ahead of time what to be prepared for as they move into seventh grade at Pendale. And then I'll be looking with uh talking with Ms Fleetwood next year. This is something I talked to her about. And look and talking about the American Indian, talk um. And and what we can do to connect our families who are American Indian and some of the prideful um. Uh celebrations we have during that month. So trying to make those connections with the middle level. And you know, letting kids know that, you know, school just doesn't stop after sixth grade. And I don't want them being nervous for seventh grade. I want that to be a smooth transition going all, going from sixth grade to seventh grade. And bringing some of those teachers into the middle uh into the elementary school to, again, foster that uh transition. We do have Prideful Panthers here, Prideful Panthers. I have fifth and sixth graders. And they actually go through an application process for this. I teach them to fill out an application. We interview them. We take them through this. We want to break that mold. We want them to feel comfortable, teach them the skills of interviewing. Um and some of the things they do, we uh they come downstairs. It's awesome in the morning. A lot of fifth and sixth graders are downstairs with the kindergartners. During exploration stage stations, teaching the kids during that time, playing with the kids during that explorations. We have kindergarten dismissal buddies. At the end of the day, they walk the kids out to buses. It's fantastic. Laptop carts, obviously, we need to maintain and organize that. Lost and found, that's growing by the day, so they help with uh organizing that. They do afternoon announcements or morning greeters. I bought um Mickey hands. Iron Man fist, the Hulk fist, and they uh pound uh the kids as they come in, or they're high-fiving the kids as they're coming in. We created peer tutoring. Um we have fifth graders working with second graders. We have sixth graders working with first graders. So we're trying to build capacity from within the building. And we also have social games with our kindergartens, kindergartners in first grades. Because as these uh students are coming in, first and second grade really took a hit coming uh losing this time during the pandemic. So we have kid uh we have um our Prideful Panthers. Again, students from within, teaching the children how to be a panther, how to be a learner. How to be a a student here at Gwinnett Square. Um the next part is creating a sense of community and belonging. We've had several different things going on. We've had the kindness blizzard. We've had the positivity, uh pos- positively the best and the kindness hearts. And these are all different activities by uh um done by our student council, done by different groups here. Uh within Gwinnett Square. Um flexible learning, like I said, uh downstairs. Um I have uh this, the centres, I have four centres. The downstairs centres are for learning, and then the upstairs centres, I bought. Uh faux leather chairs. There's four with an ottoman in the middle, because what I'm trying to do is upstairs, third, fourth, fifth and sixth. I'm trying to create open spaces. Cause what I'm trying to do is upstairs, third, fourth, fifth and sixth, I'm trying to create open spaces for them, to prepare them for the middle level, to prepare them for the high school, to prepare them for the. College level for them to be able to learn as a group. So as you can see there, I have a teacher teaching kids in these comfortable chairs. Kids can go out and collaborate. So it's not just in the classroom. They can go out in the centrum, work in a small group and then go back to the classroom. There are some of my, an example, my morning greeters. And then downstairs for my primary students to get them back in the groove again of being in the school. I did put yellow lines down the center of the hallway with arrows going one way, arrows going the other, left, right. And I put street signs for them, trying to make it more of a fun, yet a fun, fun environment, but also teaching them which side we walk down. And so we don't have any head-on collisions. The speed limit is walk, you know, we're, we're just teaching them. And it's a fun way of teaching and getting them back into the groove of school. The Panther of the Month, just like Penbrook. We, we have that also, but that is based on being kind, being respectful, being responsible and being safe. And the teachers pick the children for that month. It's one child per class and they write a blurb of why they got it. It's not just giving them a certificate as you see there. There is a reason behind it and it's important that the children understand what that reason is. And it's new children every month based on those four qualifications. And Mr. P, my, my gym teacher, he gives, gives away the. P E M V P, recognizing children, all-star students who show leadership, respect, responsibility, athleticism and a, and set a positive example. So something else within PE that kids can work towards. And let me tell you. There are so many kids. I mean, the smiles these kids have and what they do just in PE alone and having the full PE, full gym back. Let me, let me tell you, kids are excited. So down below there, it's kind of hard to see. I'm in between a car, but right there, when I went down to Disney a little while back, I spent twenty-nine ninety-nine on Disney hands. Four fingers, gotta get used to that. It was the best twenty-nine ninety-nine I ever spent. Let me tell you, high-fiving the kids, I love it. I'm finally learned how to open doors with one finger as we're, as the kids are coming in. But I'm out there every day, high-fiving the kids, saying goodbye to the kids every day. I, you'll very often see me serving lunch behind the counter. I really enjoy doing that, being part of that, helping the cafeteria out. Classroom lessons, booster lessons, Mrs. Vazley and I are definitely part of that. It's important for us to be in the classroom, seen by the kids. We're not just saying what we're saying. We are actually modeling what we are saying. The book fair, I always have a competition with the home and school and making sure my cash register is making the most money. We always have fun with the kids and the families and we. Enjoy ourselves there. We do have a Gwinnett Square Families International Cookbook. That was started our very first year. That is up and running. We do plan on doing a Gwinnett Square International Fair. It's sidelined right now due to the shutdown, but we do plan on bringing it back next year. And I'm proud to say we have Rise Vision TVs, very much like what you see up at the high school and Penn Field and Pendale. You know, where we can put more information on these TVs, not just one, but you can put one on one, or you can put the same information on all three TVs. Another thing I'm proud of, just like Penbrook did, is we do have a Gwinnett Square canvas page. If the teachers are doing it, it is important that I also model the canvas. And I created one to centralize, to have a centralized location for all staff information to efficiently disseminate the information and create a learning space for. So that is going to be up and running very shortly. But I have everything that we need for the teachers on that canvas page for the staff. So that is that in a nutshell. I said a lot. There is a lot going on here. I really want to thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions?
So thank you, Mr. Bashaw. I am sure that you are missed at the middle school. I know that my, my kids enjoyed having you as their assistant principal. And I can see your excitement in your new leadership role. And so that's really exciting for us to see. One of the things that just, you know, I'll note is that I think all three schools that presented. Were doing no place for hate. And I am thrilled to see, I know we were piloting that among our schools. I'm thrilled to see that you're following through with that. It's a great opportunity for us to, to show what we believe in as a, as a school community. And to make those activities meaningful for the students as well. So. I want to commend you on moving that forward and hopefully this will give you, you know, you'll be able to share this with your colleagues so that. You know, hopefully all of our schools will be no place for hate schools. So I'll be looking forward to that. A lot of great stuff. I'm sure that my colleagues have either some questions and others, so I won't continue. This is Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell and then Mr. Fusco.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bashaw for that presentation. And yes, I was there today in the rain and everything else that his school as well as three others and. I didn't even mind. It was a great day to see what's going on in our schools. And everything he talked about, I actually witnessed it, saw the bulletin boards and everything else, saw the interaction. He had with not only the staff and teachers, but the children. And how the children loved who he is. And that was great to see in the school. I did like the way that you had, how your school put together those adult-like chairs. Up there in the common areas that the students can go and sit in. They weren't at regular desks and chairs, but they were in those little comfy chairs, as you said. To prepare them to go on to the high school. And your numbers are great on that smore newsletter. Briefly, can you tell me, what is smore? I, I don't know what that is.
I will honestly say for one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, you get a, a pro version. And it is a newsletter template. So this is a template right here. And what you do is each one of these blocks that you see right here, well here, he's, you can translate it in any language. And you can add, they have different templates, like a text template, a video templates, all sorts of different templates, picture templates. And you can manipulate anything. The background can be totally manipulated. You can send it out via tweet. You can do a whole host of different things. You can send it out via email. However, I send it out through School Messenger. I haven't sent it out through their service, but for a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, reaching that many people, it is definitely worth the money.
Yes, it is. Your, your numbers are great. So it's meeting the people and I like the idea. That it's translated into the language of the families. I also like the idea you did about the school swag bag when you oriented the families to your school. That was a cute idea. And I, I'm interested in forty-four. Parents on the pie group. That's huge. So that's a good thing that's going on as well. And I like the idea of the courageous conversations. As well as the parent-created bulletin boards. They look really great. I thought that was a good idea. So just wanted to say thank you for all that you did.
You're welcome. And please let me, I did say, you know, it wasn't the teachers. The teachers do lots of bulletin boards. Those specific ones are reserved for the pie committee. So it's not like my teachers weren't doing them. I didn't mean it that way. Yeah, those are reserved for the pie committee and they, every month, they're here after school. It's awesome.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Fusco?
Yeah, so many fantastic initiatives that Gwinnett Square is taking on right now. And Dr. Lewis Campbell outlined a number that I was impressed with. I have to say, I was actually in your building last night for the, for the concert. So, and I, my first real interaction, not with, interaction with you, but your energy is contagious. I would say that it's, you definitely bring a passion to this and it's appreciated. My one note is about the disproportionality workbook. That's a very interesting tool. And unless I'm mistaken, I think it was just a spreadsheet. Is that something you're just straight designing yourself like? So when you do feel it's finished and refined, is it a tool that you believe that is something that could be shared amongst your colleagues in other buildings? If you see that there is a lot of useful information digging into that why, in terms of, you know. Where disproportionality is and how to address closing those gaps? Is that something that you feel that would be something that you could share among your colleagues? Cause I'm, I'm very fascinated by.
Yeah, for sure. Like I started it, you know, by just doing some basic data entry there and making some graphs within Google Sheets. Then my, my secretary's son, who is phenomenal with research, made some of these graphs for me. Cause the graphs that were coming out of Google Sheets were just not user-friendly. So these are a lot deeper than what I thought. It's what the, it's the information I wanted, but it's not how I could present it. So like this right here is a snippet of an example for. So what I want to do is when I get into my data analysis with my teams, I, I'm, I'm tired of looking at just data, like, all right, our scores. Like you were saying, our scores, we're proficient versus not, we know that, we know, but what's the why behind it? Who is it that is doing this or doing that and diving deeper into it, but also looking at. Who's participating in our school? Who feels welcome in our school? Who's involved in our school? Because if you don't have children that are involved, they're not going to have a, a buy-in to the school. And if they don't have a buy-in to the school, they're not going to perform well in the school. So those are the things I really want to see here. It just started with, you know, demographics. It started with attendance. It started with discipline and then it started with activities. And then it really kind of went out from there. So. When I get some time to really just sit down and compare and contrast this year's to next year's, that's when we're really going to start to be able to see. The why.
Yeah. And I think it's super important that you're looking past just the academics and going into participation in activities because you know, you're absolutely right. The, the music and, and sports and clubs, those are the things that really hook students, right? They're, they're, they want to be there to do those things. They're there to learn, but you know, those are the things that keep them excited about school. And it's not always something that we're as focused on, right? Is that level of participation among student groups? And I think that's a really, a, a really important data dive to try to figure that out and then to take that next step. So I'm, I'm very excited about that tool and I think that you're going in the right direction with it.
Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions?
Hey, thank you to everyone who presented this evening. I believe we are.
We have one more presentation.
Not sure where we are in the agenda. Oh wait, we still have another.
We have one more. Listen, we have one more. Dan Grumeyer has waited patiently.
That's okay.
And we want to give him an opportunity to talk about all the fabulous.
As excited. We will be equally as excited for you and we will make sure that, you know, we always have questions. You don't have to worry about that.
No problem. I appreciate everyone's time and a great job from the previous presenters, Dr. Jenkins, Mrs. Whalen, Mr. Bashaw. You guys did a phenomenal job and represented North Penn very well. So I'm excited to talk about Northbridge. And I know it's a, a building that has gone through a lot of changes lately over the past several years. And we're refining and fine tuning our program and what it consists of today. So I'm happy to share some of the great things that we're doing in our building. So this is our mission statement and we really wanted to focus on creating a statement that shows our flexibility within our building. And how we're taking the time and being intentional in creating a caring and inclusive environment. And a lot of our focus this year is making an equitable experience with academically and socially for our students within our building. So one of the things that we focused on with our presentation is to highlight. All the things that we're doing that are student-centered and building the capacity within our students to develop leadership roles. But before we get into all of that, I wanted to highlight the programs that we have at Northbridge, just so everyone is aware of the students that we serve and the capacity in which we serve them. So we actually run four programs at Northbridge, which are Bridge, Rise, MPVA and Short Term Rise Programs. So our bridge programs is our credit recovery in-person instruction and this serves students from ninth to 12th grade. Our Rise Program is our mental health capacity program, which also serves students from ninth to 12th grade. Our MPVA or our virtual academy is the, the program that serves the largest amount of kids within our building. And that serves students from seventh to 12th grade. And our short-term rise program is our transitional program that falls under our mental health capacity. But this is a program that we try to transition kids who are coming out of hospitalization or needing a smaller environment to kind of get caught up. On their academics before they return to their homeschools. And we can actually serve students from sixth to 12th grade in this capacity. So we have the potential to touch all of the buildings within our district in a variety of different ways. But these are the programs that we actually offer within our capacity in our building. Next slide, please. Within our programs, we offer services for our students to kind of get them the resources and tools that they may need at any given time. So we're very proud of our partnership with Marykey and Lakeside. And we use these services to offer group settings for our students. So our Marykey counselor comes in and performs our SAP group setting for our short-term students. So that'll be a middle school section and a high school section. And our Lakeside counselor serves as a group setting for our bridge students. So we rotate these programs in Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And we have a lot of our students kind of utilize these resources to learn some SEL curriculum, kind of build those social capacities and those skills. We also offer individual counseling sessions for some of our students in a more intimate setting. As the case arises. And we do have students who utilize that feature. They have a positive experience with our staff members. So we're really excited about that partnership that we had this year. It's something new that we didn't have before. And we feel like it's going really well and the kids are getting a lot of benefit out of it. In addition to these partnerships, we also have our Northbridge counselors. We have four transition counselors that work with our MPVA and bridge students and our Rise students. And they do a lot of one-on-one sessions with our students, kind of making sure everything's going okay with their academics, their social standards. Are they keeping up with how they want to track as they return and transition back to their homeschool? As you may be aware, this is a building that we get a lot of transient population. So every year, our student population in our demographics change. So it's a unique setting in our district that allows us to kind of create this intimate space for our students. Who for a variety of reasons make their way to Northbridge. Which brings us to this slide, our process of how kids actually get here. And we do have some metrics later on our presentation to kind of show the numbers of where we are this year. And I can kind of talk about where we've been over the past couple of years. Cause our program as it stands now is about, is in its third year. So it's relatively new of how we're trying to implement all these things for our students across the district. But the general idea and a brief overview of how we actually get kids to come to our building is our Northbridge team, which consists of. Our admin team and our transition counselors work with homeschools to identify students who may fit the criteria for our programs. So whether they're credit recovery or they qualify for our Rise Program for mental health needs. Now, as these students are identified, our transition counselors then work with the student and their family to kind of develop a pathway for success and a process. And a timeframe for how long they'll be in our building. Obviously we love all of our students and we have great kids. I can't stress that enough. And I hope you see that throughout the rest of the presentation, we kind of show what we've done this year. But we also want to make sure that we're also getting our kids the skills and setting up for success when they return back to their homeschool. As much as we like to keep our kids here every year and it's such a great environment, we understand that there are other kids who we also have to serve. And kind of utilize our resources to get the most kids through our building when they need it and transition them back for a successful career to finish out at their home building, whether it's their middle school or North Penn High School. So after we developed this plan, the students then transferred over to our building. They have their own schedule that we run in our setting. It's a little bit different than our middle school setting and our high school setting. Our timeframe is different. We follow technically a middle school teacher contract bell schedule. But the timeframes are a little off and we do not run a block at Northbridge and students who are in our MPVA program. Do not run a block for their classes. They are full-year programs. So after their transition to Northbridge, we have frequent and timely progress mine from our counselors. So they do a great job. And I really want to take the time to acknowledge our transition counselors, Mrs. Pike, Mr. McLeod, Mrs. Cantor and Mr. Pennabaker. They do a phenomenal job of meeting with our kids and making sure they're getting the resources they need within all of our programs, whether it's Bridge, MPVA. Or a rise or short-term rise offerings. So they're constantly meeting with our kids, talking about what they need to do. Asking them how they're doing, you know, emotionally, because we have a lot of students who, for whatever reason. Have felt disenfranchised through their educational journey through North Penn. And there's a lot of anxiety within our students about school settings. So we really take the time to be intentional to create a calm and. So we really take the time to be intentional to create a calm and safe environment for our kids. And our counselors do a great job of setting the standard for our students. Eventually, our students come to the point where it is time to transition them back to their homeschool. So when that time occurs, based off of their success, how they're feeling emotionally, we see the growth and the progress and the strides they've made. We set up a team or a meeting with our admin team, our transition counselors, the homeschool and the students and their family to kind of talk about our next steps. And it's a really uh interesting process. You know, we do take the time to establish, you know, this the pro- the the process of what it's gonna look like. We do have visits that go back to the homeschool. We can do partial visits. So a kid will transition back for a few periods for the day and then they come back to North Bridge just to kind of get ready to go back to their homeschool. And it's a great feature that we can create for our building. Obviously, we were a unique setting, right? We don't have thirty-five hundred kids in our building like North Penn High School. We don't have a thousand kids in our building like our middle schools. But we do have the flexibility to kind of make our school comparable, compatible with the things that we offer for our students. But it is nice to be able to take that transitional period where we can send them back to their homeschools, get their feet wet again before they make their final transition back. Once they return, and this is essential to our program, this is a key feature that we have, our transition counselors closely monitor those students back in their homeschool. So our counselors actually split between the middle schools and the high schools and North Bridge. So that's a luxury that we have. And we provide our students in our district that we send our counselors with them. So it's easy for them to monitor how they're doing as they return back to their homeschool. So they'll have meetings with those students after their transition. They'll have monitored check-ins. And they kind of make sure that everything is going okay. And if we need to readjust, there have been times where kids come back for a little bit just to kind of, you know, get that confidence back up and then they return back to their homeschool. And we've had a lot of success with our students as they transition back. We're very proud of the process that we've developed and we think in this third year that we have a really good system in place. Next slide. So here are some of our demographic data for this year for North Bridge. And I wanna highlight that we currently have three hundred and seventy-six students enrolled in our programs, which is a big number than what we've typically had before. So we're doing a great job servicing our students. But the unique thing about our building is, yes, we can have three hundred and seventy-six students, but next year our demographics may be totally different. And our number may be slightly higher, might be slightly lower. So it is a unique setting in that our population changes from year to year. We don't necessarily have the consistency that you would see in a typical school setting who our students run through, whether it's K to six, seven to nine, or ten to twelve. Our students just they transition back. But our demographic data as it is this year, we have forty percent um white, non-Hispanic, eighteen percent black, non-Hispanic, sixteen percent Asian, thirteen percent multiracial ethnic, and twelve point five percent Hispanic students. And that consists of our Bridge kids, our MPVA programs, our Rise, Short Term, and our partial programs. So all in all, we have seven, three hundred and seventy-six students this year. Next slide. Now, this is a number that Mr. Galante and I wanted to point out, just to kind of give you an idea of the volume of kids that we're getting recently. So as I said, we have three hundred and seventy-six students total right now. We've had two hundred and twelve students refer to our program this year since the start of school. And that's a significantly larger number than we typically had over the past three years. Um and one of the things that we've seen, which we'll talk to on the following slide, is that we've seen an increased number of mental health referrals this year, which is one of the luxuries that we offer our district. So not many districts have a program like ours where we can keep our students in-house and provide them additional supports while they're still getting a North Penn education. And that's something that we wanted to stress today, too, is that our program academically follows the standards of our middle schools and our high school. So it's not like they're getting a totally separate and different curriculum. Everything we do here is in line with everything that is done in their home building. At the start of the school year this year, we had a hundred and sixty-four students, which again is larger than what we've had in previous years. And this year alone, we've had eighty-six students refer to our building for mental health needs, which again is an increase from the previous two years of this program's conception um as registered. So it is important to point out that the need for our building and the amount of students we're servicing is growing. And I also wanna highlight later on the the presentation, what we're offering our kids to kind of build that success and having that successful transition back to their homeschool. Next slide, please. So here are equity goals this year. And one of the things, and I I'm not gonna read them word for word, but our focus this year is on academics, engagement, and attendance. So as I've said before, our population is transient. And for a variety of reasons, our students end up at North Bridge. And some of the goals that we have for our students is to increase their attendance. Typically, what we've seen historically from some of our kiddos is that they are school avoidant for a variety of reasons, whether anxiety, they don't feel like they fit in or feel comfortable in their setting. So one of the things that we really were intentional this year and I really wanna take a lot of time to highlight is building the attendance rate. And we find it really important in our building that, you know, as much as we talk about increasing the rigor in our academics, we found that relationship building does more for engagement and attendance than attendance does for achievement overall. Because you can have kids attend every day, but if they're not engaged and they don't feel valued, they're not gonna learn. So we were really intentional this year in building programs in a setting where kids feel that the relationships that we have in our building are positive, they're safe, they're welcoming, and they're engaging to our kids. And that's for our MPVA students as well. And we'll talk about how we've reached out to our MPVA students who are in that virtual setting to make them feel like they belong to our school and to the district. Because it is weird. They're in this asynchronous format and they're kind of moving along at their own pace, but they are a part of our school. So we've done a lot of work this year to make them feel welcome and a part of the discussion and have a say in what we do. Another one of our goals this year is to kind of increase our academic achievement. Um and I'll show the metrics and the numbers that we have so far this year. So we're really pleased and proud of where we are at this point compared to where we were last year. But the main focus of our presentation is about that attendance and engagement piece. Next slide, please. So here's our academic data for this year. Uh and this is only my second year in North Bridge, so I do apologize. I only kept two years. I can find the metrics for the initial year. Um but I just wanted to focus on the from this year and our previous year, since it we're also obviously in the midst of a pandemic. So the data is a little different. Um but where we were last year at this point in time, sixty-two percent of our students in all of our programs had a passing rate. And that's a passing rate of sixty-five or above. Our current mark for the same timeframe right now is seventy-four percent. So we've increased our academic percentage goals already this year. Now, we're not at the minimum goal that we have set for ourselves at eighty percent, but we feel confident based off of our data and where we're trending that we are gonna meet our minimum goal of eighty percent. And obviously, we'd like to to be as high as we can get it. But we did set a pretty high standard for ourselves based of our data last year, which was about sixty-four percent. Um so we're proud of where we are currently. We still have a little bit of ways to go, but we feel confident that we are gonna make that jump this year. Next slide. And some of the development that we've had this year for our staff that we can attribute to some of our changes and our achievements and our goals. We spent a lot of time, again, trying to figure out how to build a more safe and inclusive environment for our kiddos. So earlier this year, we had um actually Dr. Hall come down and do a presentation on being trans-inclusive. We have a lot of students in our building who are transitioning between schools. And some of our students are actually transitioning um in their own capacity. So it's important for us as a staff to be educated and aware and be tolerant of our students. Now, we have a very caring environment in our building. I can't say enough about the staff that we have. They do a phenomenal job, as well as all of our teachers across the district. But that doesn't mean that we can't grow as learners. So we've felt, we thought it was important to have a training this year just to kind of get everyone up on the same page with new terminology, um different things that have come out through the data that Dr. Hall presented to us. So it was really eye-opening and positive for our staff. We were really pleased with the Equity Summit that we participated in this year, that the district did a phenomenal job with, uh Dr. Waters, Dr. Hart, Mrs. Early, uh Mrs. Giammarco did a phenomenal job setting up all these pathways for us and we really appreciate it. And we actually got a lot of nice uh plugs from the district. And Dr. Bauer made a nice comment about our math teacher, Mr. Mitchell, who's beloved at our school. Um so that was a really great thing this year as well. Um I'm gonna talk about our CP and E group a little bit later on in the presentation, but I do wanna take the time, we get there, to highlight some of our staff members and the great things that they've done for our building and our students. And next slide, please. Because we're a unique building and our setting is obviously smaller. I mean, there's there's no way to sugarcoat it. We are a smaller setting. Uh but we do serve a lot of students and the interventions that we have for our kids are unique to our building. So we offer a lot of additional support periods, which we call our Bridge Periods. And we have our in- independent exploration periods, which allow our credit recovery kids to utilize those timeframes to take additional courses, whether it's through MPVA or in-person. And that allows them to kind of recoup a lot of the credits that they're missing. Our virtual hours are what we use for our MPVA students. Now, we can set up Google Meets for our students and we have dedicated time every day for these kids. But we also offer them to come in for in-person help. As things have changed and, you know, we're able to get kids back in the building, we have had MPVA kids utilize this feature more frequently as of late. So that's a positive. That's another thing that we are proud of, that our virtual kids feel comfortable to come back into our school because of our environment is a little bit smaller. But we also feel like we've done a lot of outreach this year to make our students feel welcomed in our building. The customized calendar plan is unique to MPVA because as we get kids in this asynchronous format, it's new to a lot of them. So the time management skill is kind of a shock when they see like, I'm not getting live instruction. I have these supports, but I have this calendar and this customized plan that is available for me every day. So it's it's different for them. It there's a little bit of a learning curve for some of these kids who've never experienced this asynchronous format. So one of our interventions that we do, if a student falls behind, is we create a new customized calendar plan for them. So it maps out what they need to accomplish day to day. And we have those support meetings where we work out a time strategy for them. Or, you know, give them ideas of this is a great place for you to do your work. Or, you know, if you know you have this coming up, let's prioritize some of these assignments so we can get you caught up later on. So you'll be on track as you finish the course. So that's a good unique feature that we have specific to North Bridge that we utilize for our MPVA students. As I said, we have these support meetings for MPVA students from two to three, and that's every day it's available to them upon request. Uh we do offer opportunities earlier in the day if the time fits their schedule. Uh but typically, we reserve that time from two to three. And one of the things that we are looking into this year, you know, thanks to Sue Ahar, she does a phenomenal job with our ES students and our behavioral analysts, or specialists, I should say. She kind of gave us this information about the antecedent behavior and consequence forms that they use. Now, we typically don't have a lot of consequence forms, because, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, make it the North Bridge is a great place, because it is, but we don't really get a lot of behavior issues, contrary to popular belief. A lot of our kids are gr- uh they're just great. We, you know, it's a fantastic setting. But what we do look at are trends in whether it's attendance or if they get into a work avoidant scenario. We're trying to calculate the data of what are some of these triggers that occur within our students. So we're utilizing that data to kind of create a better intervention program that's more customizable and personalized for our kiddos. Next slide, please. This is something that I'm really proud of this year, and I think it speaks a lot to the new initiatives we've had. Our attendance rate at this point last year was about fifty percent. Our current attendance rate this year is eighty-four percent. So I'm really proud of the work that our building has done this year to really make kids enjoy coming to school. And I really believe it's because of the new initiatives we've had. And as I said earlier, the relationship building and the engagement, or does more for engagement than attendance does for achievement. But we also made it intentional this year to make school fun. You know, a lot of our students have felt like they can't connect to a school setting. So some of the programs we had this year is really about bringing the fun back to school. Yes, it's a place for learning. I wholeheartedly believe that and there isn't a person on this call that would disagree with that. But it's also supposed to be fun. Learning is fun. Being at school is supposed to be, you know, this great environment where you make your friends and you establish these bonds that last for years and years to come. And you can take that all the way through college with the friendships and bonds you make. But we really place an emphasis on building those relationships with our students this year. So we're really proud of the attendance data that we have currently. Next slide. Next slide, please. So this is our CP and E Task Force. And I wanna highlight uh Ms. Caitlin Linkwiss and Mrs. Alexander Moore, who do a phenomenal job developing our workshops and the ideas that they've come up with to really integrate the cultures that are expressed within our building. So the first thing you see when you walk into our building, I have a picture of it later in the slide, is our cultural awareness board. And we change that every month for different holidays, um different themes. And they do a a really awesome job of making students aware of all the different individuals who have contributed to society. Not only do we have this board in the front of our building, as you're aware, we have students who have a variety of mental health needs. So we also have a board in our school that's rethink the stigma of mental health. And it also highlights prominent figures in society, whether it's, you know, athletes, musicians, um activists that also share similar uh mental health needs as our students. So it's important for them to see that they are not alone in this journey. There are many people from all walks of life who experience the things that they experience. And they do a great job of highlighting this for our students and our community to kind of build that camaraderie and build that trust and that confidence that it's not something that they have to deal with on their own. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna talk about the school culture that we've developed this year and the new initiatives that we implemented for North Bridge. And I'm really excited to talk about some of the things that we've done. And I'm really anxious to kind of see some of the feedback that we get about some of the things that we've implemented. So if you could click to the next slide, uh Bob. One of the things that we started this year is our Student Ambassador Program. So if you're familiar with Link Crew at the high school, this is kind of our version of it. Because a lot of our kids feel like, you know what? We want the same things in our building that other kids are afforded to. And I thought that was great. So what we wanted to do is create this leadership and give students a voice and develop their leadership skills. So we selected kids that they don't have to be, you know, the star student. They they're all different types of grades and demographics and skills. And we bring them together and they get a voice. They get to help make decisions about some of the Friday programming curriculum that we implement this year. They have ideas on how to improve school climate. Um they've had ideas for murals within our buildings. They have taken and run with our service leadership initiative this year. They've developed their own projects and things that they wanna do within the community. And this is a really neat thing that we've done this year. And we've seen a lot of benefits and seen our students grow and feel more confident. If you could click to the next slide, Bob. So within our school community, it is unique because we house anywhere from sixth to twelfth grade students. Now, obviously, they're not all together at the same time. We do have different lunch periods for our middle school and elementary school kids and we do for our high school kids. But because they're all in this small environment, we have this organic sense of bonding that students just innately develop as they come here. We've had kids who have literally not attended a school all year at the high school. They come here and they have not missed a day. And it's just, it's a really interesting and unique setting that we offer kids because it's smaller in nature. But because it's such a sense of community here with the help of our student ambassadors who greet kids and are part of the intake tours, where they kind of walk students around the building and share their perspective. We get a lot of kids who wouldn't typically interact with each other. And they just, they create these friendships. They try new things. Um next slide, Bob. So one of the things that we've implemented this year are field trips. And this Last Chance Ranch Service Project was totally student-developed and run. They wanted to find a way to help out animal shelters within their community. So they reached out to a bunch of different programs and the Last Chance Ranch is what reached back. And they created animal toys. They went and cleaned out fields for these horses. They work with dogs. They work with cats. And it was, it was really nice to see what these kids have done. And they developed a lot of um initiatives and skills within it. And a lot of these kids have never experienced being around animals before. We've had a lot of kids comment that this is the first time I've seen a horse in person. So it was a really unique and interesting um trip that we made available for these kids, but it was student-driven. We're also proud that we're gonna take a trip to the African American Museum in Philadelphia in May, so we have that lined up. So these are some of the things that we've done this year that are unique that we haven't really done in the past. So we're excited though, the opportunities that we're affording our students this year. And next slide, please. So we're excited though, the opportunities that we're affording our students this year. And next slide, please. Our community nights, and you can kind of click to the next one, too, Bob, I kind of hit both slides in one. So our community nights that we've done are trivia nights, our activity nights, and our art night. And you can see from the photos the different types of activities that we've run. And it's a nice feature that we've done that has really engaged our MPVA family. So our art night, we were really proud to see the thirty-two families came out to participate in this. And it was almost exclusively MPVA. Our activity night, where we had sporting events, crafts, and gaming, a lot of that was our bridge kit. So it was interesting to see what our different demographics were interested in. But we really were intentional this year to offer a variety of things for our programs to kind of build that sense of community. Next slide. Another new initiative that we had this year is our Friday programming schedule. So as I said earlier, we have had service projects, and we bring in guest speakers. We have our SEL curriculum that is run by our teachers and our counselors, and we've developed clubs this year. And next slide, please. So what we've done with our guest speakers, our own staff member, Ms. Jessica Smith, she's a volunteer firefighter. So it was amazing to see kids who were really interested and just kind of didn't know anything about firefighting, just hop in and put, literally put on gear, they're tying knots, they're learning about rescue sweeping. So that was really interesting. We've also had Benner G. One, phenomenal guest speaker, talked and raised awareness about autism awareness. Now, it was really proud to see, obviously, this presentation happened before we submitted our slide deck. But the amount of students who went out and paid for blue nails was really awesome to see within our community. Some of these kids really didn't know a lot about autism, and after Ben's presentation, they really kind of felt compassion, really wanted to help out and share their part. So it was nice to see that kids who may have never been exposed to a presentation like this went out and used their own money to show their support by getting blue nails, which I thought was great. And this year, what was unique, we had music therapy sessions come in in our Friday programs as another way to offer students information and strategies to decompress and manage their anxiety. Next slide, please. Now, I know that we've been here for a while, and I really appreciate everyone's time, and I'm so thankful to have this opportunity to share all the great things we've done at North Bridge. But we all talk about all the things that we've done for kids. And we thought it would be nice, I mean, we can send the video to you later, but we thought it'd be nice to end our presentation with actual student input and student perspectives of all the things that we've done at North Bridge. So again, we don't have to watch it now. I can certainly send you all the link to see the video in its entirety. But it was really neat to see what the students wanted to share and how they felt about the things that we've done this year at North Bridge. So that's all I have. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I know it's late, but I'll stay as long as anybody wants.
If you would like to send us the video, we would, I'm sure that all of us would really enjoy seeing that and seeing, I think it was a great idea to give us student voices in your presentation. So I applaud you for taking the time to do that. I'll have Mr. McBane, I'll just comment that your presentation was very thorough. I've learned a lot throughout your presentation about the types of programming that that's at North Bridge and what you're doing with the students. I loved the the horse project that you said the students facilitated. I mean, there were just so many things that you're doing there. And from the mental health component, I think that has been a, for us as a board, we have wanted to support the mental health of all of our students. Your numbers show that increase in the students that need the support. And so the work that you're doing around belonging and having and tracking the activities that kids are in and how you can bring them into that, just really applaud you for all of your work. Thank you for that, Mr. McBane.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you so much. And even for stepping in tonight for Mr. Galante, we really appreciate it. You get, you're picking up the ball and running with it. We can see that you're just as passionate. I'll be quite honest, you know, what goes on at North Bridge is some of the most difficult work in public education today. You get students for a very short amount of time, for a variety of reasons. Public education is limited in our resources to begin with, and you have to sort of create miracles that have not yet happened in other circumstances with these students. And so for you to target, you know, just attendance and just finding ways to bring students in is massively important and certainly a wonderful sign of some success. I have two questions for you, sir. The first one is, how did you stop high school students from using cell phones in these, in these meetings that we've seen? And in the pictures particularly. And then secondly, as a student transitions back to a middle school or a high school, is there any mechanism in place by which someone's looking out for that student as far as, you know, an activity they could get involved with, a club, perhaps an elective that's available? Not so much, you know, checking up on them to say, hey, how are you doing, which is very important, obviously. But to set them up with a group of other students or educators that are gonna be like their new home group that they can identify with. And thank you again for, for your time tonight.
No problem. And I really appreciate of all the support. To answer your question about the transition, yes, that's part of the process in that meeting when they transition back to their homeschool. And in an effort to kind of get through everything, kind of give a brief overview, I apologize for not including that, but yes, that is part of the discussion. So one of the things that we do to ensure success, in addition to having our transition counselors monitor the students as they return back to their homeschool, is we do look for different opportunities and clubs that they can participate in to kind of build that capacity and increase that success rate when they return back to the school. And that's through the middle schools and the high school. And we do offer clubs here. You mentioned, and kind of jokingly, how we got cell phones out of our kids' hands. Now, we do have our fair share of cellphone issues. But I will say this, we have a Division Two athlete, phenomenal athlete, who has never even heard of Dungeons and Dragons. He plays Dungeons and Dragons with ninth graders. He probably has never seen a twenty-sided die in his life until this year. And he participates in that program. So we do find ways to make students feel connected to our building, but we absolutely make sure that is part of the discussion as they transition back.
Okay, Dr. Bauer, and then we'll move to Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. G, and thank you, everybody, for your engagement and questions. I did want to say, and just offer some kudos to Mr. Grunmeyer. The North Bridge program is a, one of the best-kept secrets we have here in North Penn. And they do amazing work, as Mr. McBane just beautifully articulated. But Dan, I want to mention that you've really gone out of your way this year to make sure we have opportunities for kids. And you've brought in guest speakers, taken kids out into the community, and your passion was quite obvious throughout this presentation. So I just wanted to thank you for pinch hitting tonight and for caring about our kids so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And it's a, it's definitely a total team effort. I mean, we really believe in the motto, being a champion for all kids. So we've really taken that and run with it.
And you've also walked in your mission, care, creating a caring and equitable environment. Everything you talked about shows that you really, North Bridge is really working on that. And let me say, having children that have been in this district and having lived in this district for twenty-six years, remembering the old North Bridge had a bad reputation. Somebody said a child was going North Bridge. It just had negative connotations. And now that has changed, and that's a good thing in this community, to see that what you all are doing and giving these students a transitional place as they do what they need to do to return back to their homeschools. And as I looked at what you were doing, I saw that credit recovery and maybe it's late, but I was wondering, why do these young people need their credit repaired? I keep saying, why do these young kids need their credit repaired? They don't even have credits. But I got it, I got it. I just had to say that. Maybe, maybe it's just late enough. I just.
It's because you haven't eaten anything, Dr. Lewis Campbell. That's what it is.
Well, interestingly enough, we have a financial group coming tomorrow to speak to kids about how to manage their money and how to set up a business and take out loans. So, you know, maybe, maybe that's part of it, too.
Okay. Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell, you are muted.
I love the, thank you for that. I loved all of your professional development training and your customized calendar was really good. And I think that will help the students as they begin to try to do what they need to do to, to do better in classes. And I, I also like the idea of you being intentional about making school fun and learning fun, and those are good things. So you did just a lot of things that you're doing, and I really applaud you because that old North Bridge reputation, I even thought it was the same thing. And I've been at your school, I toured it prior to COVID. I don't know if you were, I don't think you were there, but maybe you were. No, I think you didn't work. But anyway, I toured it prior to COVID, and I want to come back. So I will come back to visit your school and Dr. Jenkins' school, even though I visited both prior to COVID. So thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Bauer, you still have your hand raised. Were you just?
My apologies.
Okay, it is time for, I believe, our student representative update, and correct?
An office, yeah, yeah, Nofs no longer.
And Nofs had homework or something that he had to do. It was a school night, and we're keeping him out late. Okay, so that means that we would be moving to the public comment, and.
There are no members of the public in the Zoom meeting tonight.
Okay, wow, we even outlasted public comment. Okay, so then a summary of items that will be moving forward. I believe we have the world language curriculum, the math curriculum, and summer programming. Did I miss anything, Dr. Waters?
You got it. That's correct.
Okay, so those are all items that are moving forward. Our next regularly scheduled ECI meeting will be on May third at six P M. We thank everyone who was here with us this evening presenting. We really enjoyed it. We know that it takes time, but it is time well spent for us. And I know that there were also board members that were also watching as well. So you're, you know, it is time well spent for us. We feel like we get a peek into your schools and everything that you're doing. So thank you for your time. And for your, I recognize, because I was principal, I know what it takes to get these presentations together. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thanks, Dan. Great job. Thank you, everybody.